Good, good morning, members of council, staff and visitors. I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting for Wednesday, November 13th to order. Mr. Clerk, if you could do a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Mr. Clerk, we have quorum. Okay. There are no, members of council, declarations of cunary interest. In online? I see none. Please note that. There are no statutory public meetings, presentations. Our first presentation, item 4.1, is Kevin Kamau. I hope I said that right. Founder and consultant in Edecede, in-person attendance. And EQKuanash, consulting power. And in Decede, in virtual attendance. DEI strategy and development, council feedback. I, I hope I was close on those names. A little bit. Okay, thank you. Good morning, Allison.
Good morning, Chair Henry and members of regional council. I have the pleasure of introducing our next item on the agenda. So the region is working with a management consulting practice to develop a DEI strategy. So in a few minutes, Kevin Kamau, founder and CEO of Edecede, and his colleague Akua Kwanzaa will lead an engagement session to help inform the content and direction of the strategy. So I wanted to take a minute to situate this work and detail how we got here. So since its inception in 2021, the region's DEI division has been actively working across departments and within local communities to address equity barriers and service gaps. Our approach is collaborative and it is rooted in best evidence and iterative in nature. So for example, the Anti-Black Racism Pillar Report shared the need for a snapshot of the demographic composition of regional staff. This led to the 2022 employee census. Feedback from staff gathered during the census talked about the need to formally review regional policies and hiring practices. And this led to the 2023 equity audit. Recommendation 66 from this audit spoke of the need for an equity-focused strategy. And here we are this morning. So I hope, I'm, I'm hopeful that this background was helpful. Thank you for this opportunity to engage council this morning. And please join me in welcoming Kevin Kamau and Akua Kwanzaa.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for, you know, squeezing us in. The, the time slot is really, really appreciated here, given the urgency and the timing. We really appreciate the, you know, you have a busy schedule. And so making the time for this very important initiative is really, really appreciated. And so we have a very short agenda today. And we're just going to begin with our introductions, jump into the project outline, and just lead a discussion on, around the, the survey that's out, that's going to help inform the development strategy for the region. And then we'll have open discussions at the very end, if there are any questions at the very end. And we look forward to that. Just beginning with my introductions, my name is Kevin Kamau. I'm founder and CEO of Edecede. We're a management consulting practice that focuses on strategic equity diversion inclusion solutions. We are guided by a few principles. These principles are anti-racism, anti-oppression informed. And as much as we rely on data, we make sure we prioritize human experiences as best as we can. And we certainly lead with research. We're, we ground our work on doing a lot of research to make sure they were on top of leading best practices in this work. And we certainly appreciate the region entrusting us in, in this initiative. That's very important for the entire community. And we look forward to what we're able to get in terms of feedback from, from yourselves as, as representatives of, of your community members. I'm also joined by my colleague Akua Kwanzaa. I'm now going to invite to introduce herself, who's joined us virtually.
No, we cannot hear you.
Hey.
Sorry, disappeared us, I guess. Audio there.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
Okay, wonderful. Good morning, everyone. My name is Akua Kwanzaa. I use she/her pronouns. And I am also a consultant with, with Edecede. And very pleased to be here with you today and to have the opportunity to, to discuss some of the important questions that we will be using to gather insight on the DEI strategy. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Akua. Not going to take too much time on this, but nevertheless, I think it's really important to ensure that everyone's clear on what we're grounded on. Our vision here is simply to connect every single workplace and community to greater possibilities. And we do that through providing the, you know, the very, every workplace with the accurate solution that they deserve to involve, rather evolve inclusively. Our values are people first. We definitely prioritize the reality of human experiences in all we do. We lead with integrity and we certainly are relentless in uncompromising your success as a region. We're committed to providing you with the accurate solutions. And we certainly conduct ourselves with humiliated respect. We have fun with every single project that we are, that we lead. And, and, and we've been doing just that so far with this project. And we certainly promote and lead a balanced lifestyle. Now, to walk you through what we've worked on over the last several months, I'm just going to invite again Akua to guide us through the project outline.
Okay, wonderful. So you will, you'll find on this slide an outline of the DEI Strategy Development Project, which is divided into six phases. And we, we started with the first phase, which, during which we kicked off the project, we aligned expectations and, and worked on a communications plan to ensure that everyone was on the same page in terms of the purpose and goals of the initiative. And then in Phase Two, we conducted a best practices environmental scan to identify successful DEI frameworks and initiatives used by leading organizations and municipalities. And that helped us to better understand the broader landscape. In Phase Three, we conducted a thorough review of the region's current DEI initiatives, including programs and documentation through a DEI lens. And this phase included both an internal review of existing EDI initiatives and an external review of initiatives provided to the community, allowing us to gather insights and strengths and to identify strengths and, and areas for improvement. Currently, we are in Phase Four, consultation and engagement. And this phase involves surveying and speaking with staff, leaders, councils, service providers, and community members to collect diverse perspectives that will shape the strategy. And after this, we'll move into analyzing our findings in Phase Five. And finally, in Phase Six, that will involve developing a tailored, meaningful DEI strategy for the region. So today's discussion is an important part of Phase Four. The time we have together today serves three main purposes. So first, by now you will have received a survey asking for your feedback. And our discussion today is a chance to expand on any survey responses you've already provided, add any new insights or details that you wish to share. Secondly, if you haven't yet completed the survey, we encourage you to take this opportunity to do so. And lastly, we're here to answer any questions you may have about the project and ensure that you feel fully informed. And we want you to be fully engaged and feel fully engaged within this process. Your input is invaluable as we work towards an DEI strategy that truly reflects the needs and the values of the region. And with that said, I'll turn it back over to Kevin to go through the questions.
Thanks, Akua. Okay, so we'll jump into the first question. That is on, on the survey that was sent out to all members of council. And for this first question, we're really trying to understand exactly what fairness or what equity looks like within the region for you and for those people that you represent. And that's simply what grounds this question. And so curious to understand so far if there are any questions around this first question. If there's any clarity that anyone may need, we're happy to do that. And then once we've clarified on that, we can move on to the next item, which would be if you have any additional feedback on this question, over and above what you may have submitted, we'd be happy to take that as well. So I'll turn it over to you as members of council. And please let me know if there are any questions or any clarification you may need on this first question. And we'll take it off from there.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I take it we're taking questions during the presentation?
Sorry, if you have any, if you, if you're seeking any clarification on the first question, we'd be happy to do that. And if you have any additional feedback as well on the first question, that would also be appreciated. We'll take that as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll likely wait until the end, the end. I've got a couple of general questions. Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. Counselor Pickles.
Thank you. The, I just wanted to clarify, so this first question, what does it look like when Durham residents have fair access to services? Obviously, we're focusing on, or are we focusing on services that are provided by Durham Region specifically? Not all and any services across the region? Is it, is it those provided by this level of municipal government?
Correct. So we're focusing on the services that the region provides, yes.
Okay. And the first point, people have access that address their unique needs. I mean, some needs are, could be very, very specific and might require obtaining medical or, or counseling services that are more specific to their needs that the region doesn't provide at a more general level. Is that, I, I'm not sure we can meet every unique need by the services we provide.
That's a good question. It, it's not necessarily actually getting to meet the need, but perhaps thinking about the considerations to take on an approach that progressively addresses those needs that we're aware and, and those growing needs that will come up as we progress within our communities, right? You may address maybe two needs today, but there's maybe another three brewing. But nevertheless, it's just making sure that we can broaden our considerations when we're thinking about service to the community.
Okay. And I guess the other thing, just to note, it's probably more of a note, less than a question, but quite often we might refer someone to other service providers or agencies that are outside the region, right, that we may partner with or may not partner with. Okay, thank you.
Prom, thank you. Great question.
Please continue.
Okay, so if there are any, if there's any additional feedback on that first question, over and above where we have tailored, you're welcome to share as well. All right, we'll move on to the next question. So the second question is simply looking to understand exactly some of those challenges that, that, you know, you face, or rather, your community faces when it comes to ensuring that everyone is not left out, or rather, is excluded from what, whatever services provided within the community. Just looking, see if there's, if you have any questions around that, if anyone needs clarification, we'd be happy to take that and address that as well.
I see none.
Thank you. And any additional feedback anyone may have on this question?
Counselor, or sorry, Mayor Collier?
Well, Chair, just, no, I'll call this a point of order. Can we just do the whole presentation first and then go to questions? Because it's going to be a very long, drawn-out process, I think. Just a question or a question.
Would that work for you as a presenter?
Sorry, we actually don't have much of, we're just going through the questions. And once we wrap up the questions, we'll avail some opportunity for questions at the very end, right? So if, if, if that helps, we just don't want to leave any questions unanswered. And just availing that opportunity for clarification would be helpful, if, if you don't mind.
So we're not getting a lot of questions. We'll continue with the process.
Okay. All right, third question. Again, challenges that you think your community faces when it comes to, sorry, the three most important areas for improvement when it comes to inclusion. Again, feel free to share any feedback you may have or any clarification questions you may have as well. We'll be happy to take that.
I see none.
Thank you. And for the fourth question, any specific actions? If you need any clarification on any one of these last two questions, would also be happy to take and feedback you may have for these last two questions.
Okay, I, I see none online as well, so please continue.
Someone hold your hand up. Sorry.
Sorry. Counselor Mayor Piafri.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm, I'm using my hand as opposed to the technology. My apologies. Good morning. Thanks for the presentation. It's more of a consideration for number four. What specific actions the Durham Region Council can take in support of these areas? I think that would be a question to you as experts or at least, you know, individuals who are dealing in the field, what we could do to help you. So my question to the chair is, you know, are there some specifics that you've looked at? And I would just ask, coordinating with other municipalities, departments, and essentially trying to see whether, you know, in different municipalities, we have a prevailing theme that needs to be worked on.
Thank you. That's a good question. Yes, we do have what we advise or offer as probably a, a way to improve or take or specific actions as it pertains to, you know, supporting these areas for improvement. But nevertheless, this question is actually more or less for you as members of your representatives. And the reason why we put this question out there for you, for, for everyone here is to ensure that you also take this as a collaborative approach. Trying to create a sense of inclusion requires your efforts, your input, no different than it does mine. And I mean, when we look at this work, we view ourselves as practitioners. And we are because of you. And, and we believe in listening to your experiences that are all valid, including those people that you represent. And so as much as we will be offering some guiding, guiding this work, we need your assistance. We need your collaboration to help us move this work forward. And that's, that's the reason why we had that there.
Okay, if, through you, and I appreciate that, through you, Mr. Chair. I just, if, can I offer some feedback? And I would just appreciate the opportunity to do that in the context of creating synergies with other municipalities, because I know you work well. There's a lot of events that occur where you're providing exposure and, and you're collecting input. But the feedback that I would, I would just provide is that it just shows strength in that, you know, I know that we're two different levels of government between lower and upper tier municipalities. But partnering in, in some of the events or some of the engagement opportunities with our municipalities, I think would, would send a strong signal that we're, you know, working together to optimize our ability to be able to provide for these, not just services, but this, this outlook in, in future needs. And I know that you're already working on that. I just think that continuing on that path, just as a council member, I see that there is an, an opportunity for growth in that area so that, you know, residents also don't see that there's duplication, that we're, you know, rowing in the same direction. And that, you know, we're essentially looking forward to having a, you know, a unified voice when dealing with matters that, that you deal with on a daily basis for, for the obvious reasons.
Absolutely. Could agree more. Thank you.
Mayor Schumer?
Thank you very much. It could be just the way I'm, I'm reading this, but number five seems redundant with number four. Can, can you elaborate maybe on what you're asking with respect to five versus four?
Okay, so let me see if I can put a distinction between the two. There are certain things that may be required, for example, to help drive those specific actions that you've called for. Could be maybe resources. It could be perhaps changing their approach. You may have a specific action, but may require some groundwork to facilitate moving those actions into reality, if, if that helps. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it does. And, and it's kind of what I was thinking. I'm just not sure if maybe number five needs some tweaking on the language to, to clarify that. Like, I, I get it that we, council may come up with an idea and number five might say, well, yeah, in order to do that, you need to increase the budget or, or make a change. I'm just wondering if, if some kind of tweaking on that language or perhaps an example might assist there. But thanks.
Thank you. Happy to take it away. Thanks for the feedback.
Mayor Burton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And through you, I, maybe it's my lens on this is, is a little off. And thinking almost, you know, rural versus urban, I'm, I'm, what, what I struggle with, especially when we do surveys and get information like this, is when you look at different items with a certain lens, say we're talking about the Uxbridge Fair that's based around agriculture, you know, a lot of it's in, on grass with animals, et cetera. If you're looking at it from an accessibility standpoint, we're on, on, a lot of the surfaces to get to places isn't accessible, can't be accessible for a number of different reasons. If we're talking about public transit, if you're in the north end of Zephyr, you know, you're gonna, we have on-demand, but there's limited access to that compared to being on Roseland or on Highway Two or where, like, it's, it's hard to be, to have equal access to regional services in, I mean, in all of our different municipalities where the living conditions are so different. So I'm just struggling with this because I know I'll get an email saying, well, on this survey on this day, you know, regional council supported this. And I think it's impossible for us to do because of the, the type of situation we have on the ground. That's where I'm struggling a little bit. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Thank you for the question. Sorry. Let me just put this back in context. We're talking about fair access and not necessarily equal access, which can be fairly different, right? We certainly recognize that it can be very difficult to get everyone to a place of fair access. But it would be, would be not providing fair service to our community members if we say it's impossible. I think there's possibilities progressively. And so it's just maybe perhaps, and let me first of all acknowledge that, yes, we may have different worldviews, but that's what makes us progressive. And your worldview and my worldview, when we sit together, we can come up with great ideas that can move our communities to a better place than it was yesterday. And so the goal here is to certainly always question ourselves. What can, what more can we do to make this place more accessible than it was yesterday? And so long as we're doing that, we're going to get to a place of fair access, right? And has to be continuous. It cannot be that we put a bar to what fair access means. It could be that we're progressively asking ourselves that question every single time we're thinking about a service to communities, access to communities. I'm hoping that sort of answered the questions.
Sorry, if I may add to it, what, what we're looking at is, first, when we talk about diversity, right? We see, you know, there's, there's so much diversity in our communities that the way that diversity looks is shifting, it's evolving, it changes all the time. We want, what we're hoping to hear from you is how do you recognize that? What is your understanding of fairness? What is your understanding of equity? And what access or what is, how can your constituents tell you what the needs are so that we can plan for those needs? So we recognize that we may not be able to serve or be, be responsive to every single need. But is that recognition that the diversity and the, the lens in itself is shifting and that emerges within our communities? And how can we be fair to those communities? So how are we listening? Are we, how are we being responsive to community members? And how are we planning? So as, as council, that's sort of the, the recognition of the positionality that you hold to respond to the needs of community. So we may not get to exactly where we, we need to be right away, but we can plan. And this is what this conversation is about, where we need to hear from you. What are you hearing from your community in terms of what their needs are? Are they having difficulties and challenges accessing programs and services in your communities? And what are you doing with your teams to be responsive to those pieces? I just wanted to kind of, kind of set that piece up if, if anyone has questions.
Mayor Burton?
Sorry. And again, I really appreciate it. Maybe it's, maybe it's the lens I'm looking at the questions with. They, they're very, very broad, which means it could be streetlights. And if we're talking streetlights on a concession road, you know, at the far quarter of Durham Region, we're not going to have them because they don't make any sense financially. So I'm looking at things with a financial lens. We're struggling with affordability for all of our residents right now. I, I'm just, when we start looking at how do we make everyone equal in a rural, urban landscape, sure, we want to get better all the time. But some things, we need to make personal choices with where we have chosen to live based on what our needs are. And, and it's more about, you know, the, the 200-acre property in a 10 miles from an urban center that I'm thinking about right now. So we should probably take this offline, but I'm, I don't like how broad the questions are because I think they can be taken out of context. And a further conversation, people won't fully understand what we're trying to do here today. Thanks.
And if you can capture that in your survey response, that would be helpful, you know, to us as well. But again, I just, I want to remind folks that when we're talking about equities, our recognition that people need different things. And we may not all need the same thing to get to equal, because we're not heading to equal. We want to be equitable and we want to be fair. So folks may need different things. So somebody may need that, you know, light from the lamppost. And somebody may just need to be able to access, you know, a recreation program at 6 o'clock in the, in the evening, because they may not be able to do it during the day because they're social support parents. So it's sort of just recognition that people will need different things. And that is where we're in that framework of equity that we're, we're working within. Okay.
Thank you. Next is Mayor Foster. Mayor Foster?
Thank you. I was just unmuting myself. Kevin Akua, thanks for this. So this, this survey was specific to members of council?
Correct.
May, may I ask how many members completed the survey?
Just give me a second. Eight, I'm told. Eight so far.
Okay, so, all right, that, that maybe says something. Will we be taking the results of, of the survey and, and looking at the broader results for residents who, who feel they have limited access? And to, to put that in perspective?
Absolutely.
I, yeah, I think I know what I know. But perhaps more important are the gaps between the understanding of the eight counselors who did this versus the gaps in self-identified individuals. So, so is that part of what you're going to be doing?
Absolutely. Yes, we do have community consultations coming up at the very end, sorry, early December. I believe December 3rd, 4th. And we also have consultations coming up for community service providers. And just want to clarify as well that for the survey, it's still open. It's just a matter of counselors going in and completing it. It's, it's still open.
Okay, perfect. I thought there was a best before date on that. And it doesn't, it doesn't matter. Thank you for that. Thank you for that piece. I have, I have a deep concern, and this is, you know, of, of concern in Clarrington. There are individuals that by virtue of connectivity or lack of connectivity, which is frequently dictated by, by when. which is frequently dictated by when they work and how they work, that they simply cannot participate. Are we looking at, are we looking at means of engaging that? And just to put it in perspective, when we offer kids swimming lessons in Clarrington, one of the reasons we're building another pool, if you are not in front of your computer and pushing that button immediately, and many people don't have that ability, you know, there's a limited ability to get kids in the lesson. So this would be a community that is under service. We are taking steps. It's obviously more complicated than that. But, you know, are we looking at, obviously, you're going to be as inclusive as possible, but can you speak to what the engagement looks like?
Yes, we do have considerations for both virtual and in-person consultations that will be happening sometime early December. And that will avail the opportunity for committee members to engage. And over and above this, just keep in mind that this is one of many touchpoints with respect to consulting committee members. There's been quite a few assessments to date, including a community assessment that was completed sometime late last year to early this year. And so we're just making sure that we cover all our bases as it pertains to feedback from committee members.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And I think all of us will be quite interested in seeing, you know, what the results from the survey, what the results of your work with the broader community, the community that sees themselves at need, if you will, as opposed to what we think, we think we know. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Certainly, thank you. And just keep in mind, we also have a survey for committee members as well, so that would also be part of it. Thank you.
Members of council, just so you're aware, that survey was resent to all of you this morning. Next would be Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. And please don't judge the response based on concern because of a busy schedule, that's all. So I'm glad it was resent. It was very interesting, yesterday we had a report from our older adults kind of initiative that's going on. And our word to counselor who lives probably in the most diverse area of Ajax had mentioned that, that food at even, because of the different cultures that we have in our community, that in an older adult atmosphere, you know, offering diverse food through that is something that is not currently being done but should be looked at. And I think it comes down sometimes just to the simplicity of that feeling that, that that you recognize that there are different taste buds out there and that you offer foods at different events. I don't know, maybe I'm being too basic, maybe I'm dumbing it down too much, but that's kind of where I am today. And I feel like sometimes we look too high level. And sometimes it's the little things that you do in your community that mean the most to people and where they feel connected by just recognizing that kind of thing. So I will fill out the survey, I apologize for my tardiness on it. And, you know, I think it's simple and complex all at the same time, right? And so I think that if we chip away it a little bit at a time, then we're going to be, you know, successful to a certain degree, right?
Absolutely, thank you for the feedback, appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for the presentation. I wanted to tackle some concerns that Mayor Barton had. But first, I can't help but think of this presentation and a wonderful presentation we had at a cycling event a while ago when someone said, pay attention to who's not in the room. And I think that's important for all of us who are representing constituents, who are not here and not able to speak to this perhaps as easily. But specifically, when we put forward questions like there are no barriers to public transportation, mobility in spaces, but, you know, to speak to what Mayor Barton had spoke to, we have individuals moving into very rural areas and we're offering DRT on demand. And they're saying, I can't get to work in the morning from View Lake. And I try to go, you know, every single morning and I just want to go to work. And you offer transit, that's a barrier. And, you know, there's a very real choice to moving to View Lake, that there was never any transit there. But when we presented as if there's no barriers to transit in View Lake, there is, or Zephyr, or Victoria's Corners, or wherever you are in the region of Durham. You know, we talk about fairness and equity. Well, in, we spend 80% of our budget on roads. There was talk of a pool when I was six years old in Skugog, there's been no pool, we have no money for a pool. 80% of our funds are going to roads. That's part of fairness and equity. And that can't be addressed through the region of Durham and through the survey. But anyway, those are my thoughts today, I'll make sure I fill out the survey, thank you.
Thank you. I take that was a comment and not necessarily a question for me, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chapman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to add on the green, and this is where it was confusing to me with this because this is supposed to be a region of Durham DEI strategy. But a lot of these questions are under control of the lower municipalities. Like, for example, improving access to community spaces and facilities. It's the lower tier that have the recreation centers, as Allison just said, about access to recreation, recreation program. The region really doesn't have any community spaces or facilities in that regard. They have programs that are run through our social services and that sort of stuff. So this is where there's a bit of a, you know, cloudy area between the two. When we're going to come up with a DEI strategy for the region, how do we, as a couple of our northern communities have spoken, how do we put that into when things can't be afforded or they don't have it? Or, you know, like the fairgrounds and things like that. Most of the lower tiers, all eight of us, are working, you know, on the appropriate DEI, you know, principles and to make things more inclusive to all our community. But this is where I got confused with some of these things because it talks a lot about inclusion in local events and programs, the community organizations. That's really limited at the region as opposed to each lower tier is dealing with community organizations at that face-to-face level as opposed to the region, if you know what I mean. So this is where I get a little confused in that area there with these questions and all that. And that's particularly why I didn't answer it because, you know, improving access to community spaces and facilities for question three, yeah, yeah, we want to do that. But the lower tier needs to do that, not the region, right? The region has no real control over access to recreation facilities, if you will. That's just my points, thank you very much.
Thank you, and appreciate you answering those comments on the survey as well, we really appreciate it. But I believe someone spoke earlier with respect to strengthening, trying to strengthen the partnerships with local municipalities. That could be considered, the region's role is to strengthen those partnerships that enable inclusion in those events, programs, and services is one way I could frame that, if that helps, to distinguish the region's role as opposed to local municipalities.
Counselor Chapman? Sorry, again, thank you. One more time, there you go.
Yeah, just on that though, and I think Mayor Barton made the point on that too. It's difficult when the lower tiers are working on the things that need to be done that are under their control. And, you know, a regional, the next level of government has a strategy and that's where the people get confused, right? Well, you know, the region says that this is what you're going to do to make this better, but you're not doing that. And then, you know, it presents a lot of questions to those local councils, if you will. So, I mean, we need, I guess, I don't know how you're going to do it, but you need a melding of that to make sure that people understand the difference between lower tier. I mean, a lot of people don't understand local municipalities responsibilities, regional municipality responsibilities, even provincial and federal responsibilities. Sometimes people get them all confused, you know what I mean? Like, lower tiers collect taxes for the region and pay the region the taxes. But everybody, you know, it's a, whether it's a regional road or it's a water break that the region is responsible, it's always the city's fault, if you get my drift. So just, you know, we need that balancing act, I guess is what I mean, okay? Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you for the feedback, certainly appreciate the frustration with the responsibilities of decentralized system of governments. People are, citizens are normally confused about federal, provincial, municipality responsibilities. And as much as I don't think that's going to go away anytime soon, I think what we can perhaps do that's maybe in our control is just maybe strengthening the partnership to make sure that every level of government is actually functioning to provide that service at the very end to the citizen, right? And that's simply, that's a goal here with respect to trying to make sure that we have a strategy that works for everyone.
Thank you, I'll have our CIO comment.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to recognize that, as many of you know, we have a very good working relationship with all eight of our local municipalities and it would never be us trying to dictate what local tiers should do. Allison and her team meet with their local representatives on a regular basis and a lot of this work is undertaken jointly. So what we discover will inform your staff and vice versa. So I wanted to put your mind at rest there that across the board, we do have working groups that cover all nine of our jurisdictions. So thank you very much.
So that exhausts all the questions. I want to thank you for attending today and bringing your team. And feel free, we'll give you a second. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But if you want to take advantage of leaving, please feel free to do that.
Thank you so much, thank you, Chair. And thank you all for the time. And please, when you have a moment, would be happy to receive your feedback via the survey whenever you have a moment, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Members of council, we'll move on to item 4.2. Chris Leach, manager of transportation planning. Danielle Kulp, project planner. Kate Whitfield, principal at Alta Planning Design Canada, Durham Region Cycling Wayfinding and Signage Strategy for Report 2024 Cowe-45. And members of council, I thought it was me that was only hearing that sound, but I'm assuming everybody else is, so we're, so you're all fine. Please come up, Chris. Well, could, so we'll have staff address that sound. Thank you. Good morning and welcome, and when you're ready, please start.
All right, good morning, Chair Henry, and members of regional council. My name is Chris Leach and I'm the manager of transportation planning. And today, I'm pleased to present an overview of the Durham Cycling Wayfinding and Signage Strategy. And I'm alongside my colleague and project manager Danielle Kulp and Kate Whitfield of Alta Planning and Design, who is our project manager from the consultant side. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work of our team as well as the support of regional staff, area municipal staff, and the public. So before diving into the details of the strategy, it's important to ensure we have a bit of an understanding of what cycling and wayfinding signage is and why we undertook this important study. So what is cycling wayfinding signage? It's a system of signs and markers specifically designed to guide cyclists along routes. The purpose of the strategy is to create a cycling-specific wayfinding system to improve navigation, safety, promote connectivity, and encourage more people to cycle. The development of the strategy first stemmed from the Regional Cycling Plan in 2021 to support a greater shift towards a more cycling-friendly culture here in Durham and respond to the growing need for a cohesive, consistent, and well-designed region-wide wayfinding system to improve the cycling experience and, of course, safety across Durham. So in terms of the outcomes and impact of the strategy, it's important to enhance our cycling infrastructure and support broader regional and local objectives. The strategy aligns with our regional transportation and mobility goals. Increased use of cycling is supported by making navigation and connectivity easier. The strategy establishes a comprehensive guide and standardized framework for the design, placement, and maintenance of cycling wayfinding signage across Durham Region for residents and tourists alike. The strategy acts as a critical decision-making tool, setting clear guidelines and priorities that streamline resource allocation and project planning for cycling wayfinding efforts. So it's one thing to design signs, but then placing them and making sure there's a cohesive way of doing that is what the strategy is all about. Stakeholder consultation was a key component of the strategy, including regional staff, area municipalities, agencies, and community groups. This collaboration ensures that everyone is aligned and working towards the same goals, fostering a sense of community ownership over the region's cycling network. The strategy includes adaptability and scalability, meaning that it offers a flexible approach that can evolve as new areas and neighborhoods develop or as cycling trends may change. The wayfinding system can grow with the community as new cycling facilities are constructed. And finally, for educational resources, the strategy acts for staff, new personnel, and stakeholders as not just a guideline but a bit of an educational tool as there are appendices that, you know, talk about best practices and implementation of cycling wayfinding. Now, I'll discuss some of the key foundations used to inform and direct the development of the cycling wayfinding and signage strategy. So in terms of alignment with regional plans and policies, wayfinding has become a key feature reflected in the Regional Cycling Plan, as I mentioned earlier, the Transportation Master Plan, and the Vision Zero Road Safety Action Plan. Existing policies demonstrate the region's commitment to providing high-quality, safe, sustainable transportation options to serve all modes and users. And the wayfinding signage is a part of that. So we talk a lot about the primary cycling network, which is the focus of the signs. So this is the network of core cycling routes from the Regional Cycling Plan that connect to key destinations along regional roads and then some local roads and a few off-road sections as well. The strategy is identified, the strategy focuses on strengthening wayfinding along the primary cycling network. So signage will be added along these core cycling routes to help connect cyclists to key destinations by bike and improve use of the primary cycling network and recognition across all eight area municipalities. So that's the broader aspects of the strategy. I'll now turn the presentation over to Kate Whitfield, will introduce the vision for the strategy.
My name is Kate Whitfield, I was the consultant PM. I'm a professional engineer and a professional planner. I'll take you through some more of the details today. So the vision comes together here on the slide. So after listening to the public, key stakeholders, and regional staff, we co-created the vision of the cycling wayfinding and signage strategy together, which seeks to establish Durham as a premier cycling destination while simultaneously encouraging increased active travel among visitors and residents. This will be achieved through a distinctive and clear wayfinding system that seamlessly connects individuals to a wide range of attractions and destinations across Durham region. So to help achieve this vision, a set of seven principles and four goals have been developed, which speak to the importance of consistency and simplicity, facilitation of seamless connectivity, enhancing navigation and movement throughout the network, the need for a unique identity, and importance of addressing the needs of diverse user types with inclusivity of and equity at the forefront. So a key component of the developing the cycling wayfinding and signage strategy included extensive engagement. Through the next few slides, we will dive into the approaches and tactics used to develop strategy. So the cycling wayfinding and signage strategy was initiated in the spring of 2023 and the work was divided into six phases as shown here. The first three phases from the spring of '23 to winter '23 were focused on laying the foundation and background research and included best practices, as usual, establishing the vision, goals, and objectives, and assessing existing conditions and the needs of the cycling wayfinding signage across the region. Phase four through six spanned the winter of 2023 to fall of '24 and focused on more technical details. That's when you get into sign family design, implementation, maintenance, considerations, and development and the finalization of the strategy. A comprehensive approach to engagement was applied throughout all stages of the strategy. A set of three distinct audience groups were identified to reflect a range of needs and technical expertise to help guide and shape. and technical expertise to help guide and shape different aspects. These groups included the public, which included all members of the community who will benefit from the cycling wayfinding and signage strategy, the project review team, which included key review agencies to develop that technical information and feedback, and we had an equity steering committee comprising of equity-deserving individuals and groups who are not traditionally engaged in consultation processes. So we used a variety of digital and in-person activities. They were utilized to foster inclusive and collaborative participation throughout the project, and included the project review team meetings, equity steering committee meetings, two public open house sessions, a visual preference survey, and a public webpage where we, people could receive updates on the strategy as it progressed. So what we heard throughout the project, there was extensive feedback provided. Key topics raised included the importance of consistency in application and branding throughout and across the region, desire for signage maintenance and effectiveness to help reduce sign clutter, accessibility in design, interpretation, and placement of signage so that signage is easy to understand and interpret by people of all ages and abilities, and keeping user focus at the forefront so that cyclists can easily navigate and orient themselves, no matter where they are in the primary cycling network. We also gathered important feedback regarding the look and feel of the signed family, which helped shape the final design and branding. We'll now dive into those, the key components, those deeper details of the recommendations of the strategy. So one is destinations, a key part here. Destinations help provide orientation for cyclists on the primary cycling network and fosters a sense of place and understanding, and are critical in determining the information contained on the sign. So to help determine what destinations are included on cycling wayfinding signage, a set of four criteria were used to identify destinations. This included destinations that were open to the public, available year-round, accessible via the primary cycling network, and had significant public interest. This actually resulted in extensive lists of 700 destination points that were used to create a database for the region to help with sign programming during implementation. The strategy categorizes destinations into key categories based on their importance and how they can be used to orient cyclists. The destination categories include, so primary, they're at the top, which include major landmarks, essential geographic references, sign from distance up to 10 kilometers away, serving to orient visitors from afar as they move significant reference points, such as municipalities and communities. Then you have secondary destinations, which serve as important points of interest that are accessible via bike routes or trail systems marked on signs with a three-kilometer radius. They are more localized in their functions, such as trail access points, major community centers, transportation hubs, post-secondary campuses, and healthcare facilities. And the last is the tertiary destinations, which include local attractions, institutions, services accessed by active travel modes, sign from distances as close as one kilometer away, such as a local park, library, conservation area, and museum. So on the slide, we represent that sort of identity for the primary cycling network. So to help achieve the objectives of establishing a cohesive, accessible, and distinctive identity to wayfinding signage for the region, a set of branding elements and guidelines have been developed. These include the establishment of a unique icon to represent the PCN and provide the network for distinct brand identity that supports universal understanding and quick recognition by cyclists of all ages and abilities, which helps the PCN users navigate cycling routes more effectively. So the icon seen there is meant to be used on all sign types, as well as communication materials created to promote cycling wayfinding signage. The icon depicts a cropped bicycle illustration inside the letter D for Durham. It is designed to be clear and simple communication with a focus on cycling. Because of the recognizable nature, the icon is intended to be used with or without the words "primary cycling network." The alternate icon shown in the bottom left of the slide is best used where space is limited, whereas the primary icon is encouraged to be applied where more space is available, such as kiosk signs. So part of an outcome of these strategies is a sign family. So a suite of signs and wayfinding elements have been established for the cycling wayfinding and signage strategy to enhance navigation of the PCN by bike. Each sign is slightly different in its design depending on its purpose. However, all signs share the common attributes. Graphics are set on a navy-blue black ground. White text is used for maximum legibility, and the PCN icon is prominently placed. Kiosks are considered access elements and guide users in the network. They provide navigational information and include maps and community branding, located in visible areas along primary routes that are meant to be located at places cyclists would pause, given the detail of information provided on them. The rest of the signs are designed to be used while in motion and do not require cyclists to dismount to read them. So there are decision signs, which mark junctions of a bike route, provide directions and distances to destinations through bike routes, and include destinations with, with the distance and directional arrows. You have confirmation signs indicate the user is still on the intended route to the destination and helps build cyclists' confidence in route selection to destinations. We need in our sign family turn signs where a route turns from runway to another to help to the closest primary destination. Street signs are intended to be located at trail and street intersections where different cycling routes bisect. Then we have co-branding medallions are meant to be applied to existing signage to indicate routes that are part of the routes under a different jurisdiction. These help with fostering sort of that collaborative relationship within the cycling wayfinding framework. Pavant markers are also recommended as part of the sign family to signal to other road users that cyclists are present or to be expected on a route, and can also be used for lane positioning and to indicate bike route directions and names. Together, the signs create a cohesive and unified look and feel and provide necessary information to enhance wayfinding for cyclists along the PCN. So I'll pass it to Danielle for the next section.
Thanks so much, Kate. So the strategy provides high-level guidance on the implementation activities and considerations to help guide the region through implementation. The goal for the implementation phasing is to focus on existing PCN routes and those scheduled for implementation in the short-term horizon, subject to budget approval, timing of regional projects and related initiatives at the area municipal level. It's envisioned that priority for implementation will be given to segments of the primary cycling network with existing infrastructure and no signage in place, followed by new planned routes identified in the short-term planning horizon in the regional cycling plan. The strategy recommends a set of route prioritization criteria be developed to help further refine and identify specific routes where signage can be rolled out sooner. The strategy also identifies general roles and responsibilities of key stakeholders involved with implementing the strategy, including the region, area municipalities, and conservation authorities. It's envisioned the region will play a primary leadership and coordinator role in terms of implementation and lead the rollout of signage on regional roads, whereas area municipalities and other partners will support the rollout on local routes and trails. To support maintenance and implementation responsibilities, the strategy recommends the establishment of a working group that would include representation from the region, area municipalities, the Durham Active Transportation Committee, other government agencies like MTO, Parks Canada, as well as conservation authorities, to help assist with implementing, monitoring, and maintaining cycling wayfinding signage, and to identify priority segments along different routes of the PCN. While implementation of the signage is critical, we can't forget about the importance of ongoing maintenance of the system to ensure longevity and durability, safety and compliance, cost efficiency, and the brand image and reputation of the wayfinding system and its various components. To support with this, guidance outlining estimated activities and frequencies required for maintenance of the wayfinding infrastructure have been identified as part of the strategy. This includes key considerations, such as ongoing planning and evaluation to respond to changing land uses and destinations within Durham and along the PCN to ensure that the signage system remains relevant and effective. It also includes regular inspections, cleaning, repairs, and replacement to ensure that the signage remains in optimal condition, as well as informing and involving the community in the maintenance process, fostering a sense of ownership and pride in the cycling wayfinding signage system. The approach to funding of the implementation of the cycling wayfinding signage system aims to leverage existing approaches and mechanisms which have already demonstrated success and propose new tools where necessary to create a more effective model. Based on this, it's recommended that the region manage the funding and implementation of cycling wayfinding signage, including maintenance and repair of on-road cycling facilities and signage on regional roads. Funding for all other cycling wayfinding signs on the PCN, including maintenance and repair, would be the responsibility of the area municipalities or other agencies, depending on cycling route jurisdiction. To help support implementation of cycling wayfinding signage along the PCN for the region and other PCN route partners, three, three tools and tactics have been identified as part of the strategy. This includes implementing collective purchasing of signage through a joint procurement process between the region and other implementation partners to achieve economies of scale and enhance cost effectiveness while maintaining uniform quality and design across the PCN. Another tool is to have the region take more of a leadership role in the act of monitoring and applying for grants to help reduce costs and accelerate the implementation process for all partners. Lastly, establishing an MOU between the region and area municipalities to clarify roles and responsibilities and establish commitment to support cycling wayfinding and signage as a joint initiative is a third implementation tool that's being proposed through this initiative. So to recap, the cycling wayfinding and signage strategy provides a clear framework and foundation for the region and partners of the primary cycling network to build upon and to help improve cycling wayfinding and navigation of the PCN by bike. The strategy enhances connectivity and strengthens navigation of the PCN. It identifies additional resources and support to help implement active transportation navigational elements, supports active transportation mode share via expanding transportation options for non-auto trips, and supports community needs for improving safety, coordination, and commitment to cycling wayfinding. To help with achieving recommendations of this comprehensive strategy and implementing the cycling wayfinding signage along key PCN routes, we plan to conduct a sign inventory audit to document the types of signs that exist and support monitoring and maintenance. We also will be seeking to establish route prioritization criteria to help confirm which existing PCN routes should be prioritized first to maximize the impact and effectiveness of the cycling wayfinding signage. And lastly, identifying those segments on the PCN where signage can be rolled out, which will help with confirming an implementation schedule for signage along the entirety of the PCN. This now concludes our presentation, and we welcome any questions you have on the strategy. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a number of councillors with questions. First is councillor Sheehan.
Thank you so much. Through you, Chair Henry, just a couple of questions. And I know that you had talked about the MOU between municipalities and the region. I just want to know how does it look like when the cycling track ends regionally and the municipals, municipality takes over? Because I know a lot of these cycling paths kind of merge into municipal and regional. How does that, how, what will the MOU look like?
So through you, Chair, the establishment of the MOU will more provide that general commitment that we are all seeking to help advance the PCN and integrating signage collectively. So it's more of a collective agreement as opposed to getting into the nitty-gritty of who exactly does what, but it will be a collaborative exercise to determine what exactly, I guess, the level of detail that we need to go into so that all partners can flourish when it comes to implementing signage on our PCN.
Thank you. I have a follow-up to that, Chair Henry. So let's say one cycling track merges into a municipal track, will the signage keep on continuing?
I'm through, Mr. Chair. The focus of our signage, cycling wayfinding is, strategy is really on the primary cycling network. So there would be signage potentially where we'd look at, if there was a significant part of the local network, we could say, you know, this is coming up. And then for your local networks, if you, this would, that would be something that's separate. So we would kind of tie into it, but we, it's really for that primary cycling network recognition, because, you know, for a large part, most of the multi-use paths or facilities in the boulevards do not really, do not have any, like, existing cycling wayfinding. There's, there's a couple of examples, and Ajax has some, but on the whole, there's some on the off-road trails, but yeah, it's kind of creating that unified, so there's a brand recognition for the primary cycling network. But yeah, there could be a tie-in where we sort of say this coming up if it's a, if it's a, you know, significant local route.
Okay. As long as there is a good collaboration. Thank you. Chair Henry, I do have one more question.
Okay.
Thank you. So I'm assuming that this is for the existing networks, and how does the provincial new, I wouldn't say law changes things when we need to take permission from the province or the Ministry of Transportation to bring more cycling lanes? Now, is that more urban, or it kind of dives into our jurisdiction as well in the suburban kind of in setting?
It's through you, Mr. Chair. It's a good question. So from what we understand from the proposed legislation, it's, the province wants to review and oversee where we implement a new cycling lane and take over an existing lane. So from our review of the primary cycling network, we don't, we don't have any on, on regional roads, and I think we haven't really seen any that are obvious on any of the local components of the primary cycling network. We're going to dig into that deeper, but most of our facilities that are planned are, you know, tied to road widening, reconstruction, or if it's an existing road, you know, converting a sidewalk to multi-use path or filling in gaps. So multi-use path in the boulevard, or it could be where we, you know, change something that's on the shoulder and it's a wider lane today to, to, to an on-road facility. So we don't, so because of the nature of our, our network, the vast majority of routes that we've seen, it's not a conversion of an existing travel lane to a cycling lane, so we're not affected by that. But we, we will confirm just to make sure there aren't any little pieces that we forgot about, but just on a broad level, we haven't seen any of that.
Yeah. Thank you. Because it looks like it's more for major cities than suburbs, so.
Yeah, those types of conversions, they, I mean, not that we can't, not that we couldn't have them here, but they do tend to be more in the, yeah, the larger urban centers, the downtowns, where, you know, right-of-way is, is very constrained.
Thank you. That'd be all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Schumer?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And through you, thank you for this presentation. I'm, I'm very happy you mentioned the maintenance aspect, because I think we've all been on trails and what have you where there was signage put in and it's just left to its own devices and fades and deteriorates over time. So I'm really happy that that is part of this plan. Do we have anything in place to measure the use of our cycling network?
Just Mayor Schumer, you're, you're, you're legible but garbled. I'm going to ask that you turn your camera off and see if that improves the sound. And were you, did you hear the question?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. Thanks. Through, through you, Mr. Chair. So in terms of monitoring cycling use in the region, our Traffic Engineering and Operations Group does a regular program of cycling counts on regional roads, and they are done generally in the summer, but we do have counts that were done in the spring, fall, and winter as part of our monitoring of the Ontario Municipal Commuter Cycling Program, which was a provincial funding program from a few years ago, and then implemented several routes on our network. So yes, we have that, we have that monitoring data to track, to track use, at least on the, on the regional systems. I believe a couple area municipalities have counters as well, and I think we have two ECHO counters, one at Taunton. echo counters, one at Taunton and Cochrane, I believe, so we have those as well.
Okay, thank you. The reason I ask is developing, you know, some signage is great, and perhaps it could lend itself to something in addition. And the first thing that comes to mind would be the possible placement of something as simple as a QR code on some of the signage, where cyclists could scan that in, and the information would be sent to the region to indicate, yep, it's, you know, somebody's there, somebody's using it. You know, cyclists are a pretty dedicated bunch, as I'm sure councillor McDougal will testify to. And I'm just wondering if something like that, so additional use, could be added or thought to be added to the signage, where, you know, it can actually, it assists the cyclists and it would assist the region in collecting some data.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for the question. I'm going to turn that one to Kate Whitfield, who did some of the design of the signs. And we know we have a QR code on the kiosks, but I'll let her elaborate on that a bit.
Through you. That would be the key point. There's the opportunity at kiosk, and then the opportunity for the region to use that in many ways for sharing of information and interacting with people. It is the one that you stop at, the rest you're still, you're moving on by on your wheels. But yeah, the kiosk and the QR code create those kind of opportunities.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Schumer, may I ask that you sign out and sign back in again? Hopefully that'll fix your sound problem. Councillor Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Last week, we had a very unfortunate death. A thirteen-year-old girl was killed on her bike. And the cross-section that she was crossing on a multi-use path was very clearly marked as being bike and pedestrian crossing. What are we doing to educate drivers on watching out for pedestrians? I'm a runner. I know I'm not very big, but I have, and I ride a bike, but I have been nearly hit doing both sports. And the reality is, distracted driving is not necessarily texting. Distracted driving is in your head, people are trying to get places, people are always late. And, you know, these two lives, these lives were changed. The driver's life will be changed forever, the family's life has been changed forever. And had she had just looked in the opposite direction, things might have been a different story. So, you know, we need to not only educate cyclists, absolutely. You have to be, you have to be as aware of what your surroundings are, but drivers definitely have to. If we're providing these kinds of wayfinding information and markings on the road, drivers need to understand what that means for them. And so I don't know, I'm not, this is not blaming anyone, but how are we doing not only educating the cyclists and the pedestrians and people using the infrastructure, but how are we also messaging this out to drivers? To make it safer for everyone? There's more and more people not wearing helmets, which is so disturbing for me. Not saying it would have saved her life, but I'm just saying that there are situations, I would never go on a bike without my helmet on. So I just feel like, like, signage is always going to be great, but then you can put too much signs up and then no one's looking at signs anymore, right? So it becomes just, you know, nobody's looking at it. So I really think that there has to be a concerted effort, especially at times where the time changes. So it's darker, gets darker earlier, you know, how do we prevent these kinds of things happening? This should not have happened, and yet it did. So I feel like that, that I agree with everything you're saying, but that I feel like that the drivers need to be reeducated again, and I think that that is our responsibility.
So. So there is an information package related to what we're doing, and we're going to make sure that the public is informed on this. But we do continually put messaging out related to cycling. So if you feel you'd like to speak to that, go ahead, and if not, that's okay too.
No, it's a, it's a good, it's a good comment, and I know that we have, I mean, I mean, through, there's different safety initiatives, of course, the region has, the big one being the Vision Zero Road Safety Action Plan, and, you know, this, and this relates, this relates to that, so obviously getting the word out. And I know, you know, there are a lot of drivers that got their licenses before, you know, the cross-rides and that were in effect, right? So I'm not saying that's the reason, I'm just saying that is, that is an issue, so obviously ongoing. I know the ministry has, you know, information on their websites, and we get that word, I would think, through Vision Zero, but you're right, just keeping that message. And the hope is that, you know, wayfinding, although it's a sort of an ancillary aspect of it, but the hope is that some of those visual cues help as well when you see that presence of signage. It might be a minor thing in that respect, but hopefully that helps too, because, you know, visual cues for the driver are always very helpful, as well as for the cyclist.
If I can just add that as well, there's also other programs that we offer at the region, including our Smart Commute Program, our Active and Sustainable School Travel Program, and our Cycle Durham Identity, if you will. And those are also other ways that we can go out into the public, and we host a variety of different campaigns throughout the year that are focused on different ways to promote safe cycling visibility, but also for those that may not be cyclists themselves, but also engaging with cyclists on our roadways so that we're all sharing this space together and aware of one another. So I think that this really is a concert, concerted effort, rather, where we need to collaborate at the regional level, at the local level, and, you know, with our police, with Vision Zero and other staff. So this is not just, it doesn't just sit with our group, it sits with so many different groups. But I think if we're all committed to that, and signage is one of those ways where we can help increase that visibility. But to your point, we are trying to be strategic and flexible with our approach with what we're recommending so that we don't see that sign pollution, so that it doesn't, so that it is interpreted and seen, and people are able to interpret everything that's on there without it becoming too overwhelming with everything else that may be going on at an intersection. So we are trying to be strategic in terms of how we implement that, where it's going to be most effective.
Councillor McDougal.
Thank you. I'm not sure I want to follow councillor Crawford on that, but just, I guess to follow up on that is just a question in terms of consistency, because I have to be honest, when I first looked at this report, I couldn't help but think, what's wrong with just the green bicycle sign, the square one that we've seen all over everywhere?
So through you, Chair. So the green bike route signs, those are great signs, and we do see those on our network, but those are confirmation signs. So it's one sign type to confirm that you are on a route, whereas what we're proposing is a suite of signs to help get you from one destination to the other. So we're including a medley of different things to help a variety of trip types, whereas the green bike route signs, while they are good in isolation, they only confirm that you're on the route, whereas this is really trying to establish that identity and connect you from A to B, so you have all the information that you need through this range of sign types, if you will.
Okay, and then further through, Mr. Chair, I went, had to go through the report in some depth to find what I was looking for, and it was at the very back of the report, and it was G21, and it showed a sign of, of co-branding is what it was. So, because we already have many routes that are, the Greenbelt Route, or the Waterfront Trail, or the TransCanada Trail, or even, unfortunately, we've called this the PCN, which is also the Provincial Cycling Network. So we've got multiple already branded networks that I assume are going to retain their branding. So is that the, so our proposal right now is, is the existing signage won't be removed, we're going to add a little D underneath with, and in the future, we're going to have the co-branded signs? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. I'll answer this one through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Yes, so yeah, there are some routes that have a specific identity already, like you mentioned. So if they're perfectly good signs, we just want to have an aspect of, like you said, the co-branding underneath, just to demonstrate they are part of our PCN. But the majority of routes that are part of the PCN have, you know, no wayfinding signage. So the idea is to, those would be new signs, and then where there are existing signs in good condition, we would do that co-branding. So we don't want to lose, you know, obviously the Waterfront Trail, TransCanada Trail, those are unique identifiers and hallmarks, and that, and those are agencies we'll work with and we have been working with in the strategy. But yeah, the idea is just to have users kind of recognize that Durham D on the routes they're riding, so they know where those key connections are.
And then I do have a further question, Mr. Chair. In terms of the funding for this, it appears that if it's a regional road, the region pays for it. If it's a local road, then the local municipality will fund it. So when I put it in a Skugog lens and a bit of even Oxbridge, if I might, you know, the TransCanada Trail, the Old Simcoe, Ashburn Line Six, Old Skugog, you head over into Oxbridge, Brookdale, Concession Seven, WAG, these are all standard routes for us that people tend to ride. Those are all going to be the responsibility of the lower tier to provide this signage? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so that's making me regret my decision to support, say, having Old Simcoe be the route instead of Simcoe Street, or Ashburn be the route instead of Lakewood Road. We already have, I mean, we already have people suggesting that the additional minimum maintenance standards that we're taking on by having these cycling routes is an additional bound or an additional responsibility to the municipality in terms of what it's costing us to maintain our roads. I won't say the number of times I've had urban riders come up from Whitby or former mayors of Ajax through Skugog saying, you know, this road needs to be fixed because I'm cycling on it. We don't have funds for that, so it'll be quite some time before Skugog signs these. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pickles.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I didn't recall during the presentation, if you said anything about the TransCanada Trail. You had talked about other potential partners, conservation authorities and that, but councillor McDougal actually did raise TransCanada Trail. Is cycling encouraged on the TransCanada Trail as it goes north up through Ajax, the Riverside area, and up through Pickering, the Clermont Conservation Area? Do you know, is it, is it cycling encouraged?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, there are sections of the TransCanada Trail that are part of a cycling network, so the rail trail in Skugog, for instance, is part of the TransCanada Trail. But then the parts you're mentioning, they are not part of the primary cycling network. But there are some parts that are coincident with the TransCanada Trail.
So I wonder, and it's maybe for an offline discussion, but I find that section of trail going north, and I've walked part of it and I've ridden part of it, although I haven't ridden it if you're not allowed to. But it's not clearly defined, and you can kind of lose your way, and in some cases, you're riding uphill on a gravel section of the side of a regional road. It's very tough. Is TransCanada a partner that we can reach out to to try to improve the wayfinding and the cyclability, if that's a word, of that section and that route? Up to the, you know, Pickering Town Line, I suppose?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we would engage with them, like, as we, you know, look to roll out implementation for existing routes, you know, for certain, we're looking at those section by section, that'll come through the working group. But, you know, TransCanada, we would definitely want to reach out to them as part of that.
Okay.
We did have the Waterfront Regeneration Trust in the working group for this study, just because they have, I guess, a more extensive network, but yeah, we would definitely reach out to them as well.
And are they active? Are they out there? Do they fundraise? I assume they're nonprofit. Do they fundraise? Are they out there improving their sections of trail and putting signage up, or are they strapped for funds?
I know they do, they do fundraise. I know they have, you know, an active website, board of directors, they have some pretty prominent people. I know former Prime Minister Stephen Harper's wife was on the board, for instance. They had like, but in terms of the actual, yeah, signage, I think they do look at, you know, improving their network and looking at new connections, but I don't know about their budget, what their status is, but I know they're focused all across Canada, so, you know, this is just a small piece for them, but obviously it's, you know, in the backyard of Toronto and our municipalities, so.
Okay. It's a rather specific question, so I won't dwell on it, but, you know, if there's a willing partner and a willing partner with resources, it sometimes helps, so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, certainly. That's why we put in our, you know, sort of funding implementation strategy, some of the other agencies that have jurisdiction over sections that may help. And that include, you know, a couple of components of the PCN that are provincial highway as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Dykes.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your presentation. I love the logo, you've done a great job on this. You've answered some of my concerns, one about signage, because I call it sign pollution, especially on the waterfront. So it's good to see that you will be combining, you know, and looking at that issue as well, because the wayfinding signage is really important, particularly for tourism. And that's another thing, you know, we need to talk, or we need to discuss more with the public, because they don't understand the implications or the benefits of tourism, particularly when you have, well, we need a north-south route, we would like that on Wesley, but we need a more north-south routes. But going across the waterfront, it's huge tourism. So when you, you know, you have, I think, one day, the Waterfront Trail ride was leaving from Ajax with 140 riders, and then you had 550 coming from Toronto the same weekend, like, leaving the same day and all traveling to Kingston, and that's huge for small towns, because we do, I know with the Waterfront Trail, right, they do promote the small towns and businesses. So it's, I think we need to talk about that, too, the importance of that, even if you're just going from Pickering to Whitby to go shopping or something like that, that happens as well. So it's really important. And the multi-use trail, though, I want to ask you about that, because now we are seeing more and more battery-operated vehicles. So I don't think that a multipurpose trail is going to be a safe kind of way to travel for bikes and pedestrians with those vehicles. So are we looking at changing, you know, making it safer?
Yep, through you, Mr. Chair. That's going, yeah, that's a little going into, like, facility planning as opposed to the wayfinding strategy, but the idea is that, and it's actually the next report on the agenda, the e-scooter bylaw, there are rules in place about the maximum speeds and where to ride and that. So on Ajax, they can ride on the multi-use paths in the boulevard, as well as some of the off-road paths, as long as they meet a certain width. But again, I think, you know, the outreach of that program on how to ride safely, how to ride properly, how to interact with people, that's something that's, you know, that's an ongoing education, I believe. So I think they can coexist in the multi-use paths, but just people have to be respectful, just like cyclists are in the multi-use paths as well.
I disagree there. With the Waterfront Trail, we have constant complaints about pedestrian cycling.
It is questions.
Yeah, the Waterfront Trail is busy, is probably our busiest.
So that's why I'm asking about, you know, moving forward with these path systems and signage, because the signage is important for cyclists if they want to move away from the pedestrian traffic. And just want to confirm, too, you know, key stakeholders, and you are including the Great Waterfront Trail in that? Okay, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councillor Mayor Pietri.
Well, we're having an interesting conversation, a side conversation here, Mr. Chair.
I'm listening to it.
Yeah, I can imagine. And as you can imagine, there are quite a few on this side that are well-versed in cycling and even in front of me. So I wanted to ask some questions in the context that, I know councillor McDougal, you know, asked some questions and may have seemed critical, but he's highly supportive, and I think that people should know, as am I, of a proper cycling network. But there are realities that we need to sort of meet. One of the first campaign sort of platforms I had probably two decades ago was to... was to help form some of these networks and create a trail system. But, you know, we lag a little bit. And so I just wanted to touch on the realities through you, Chair Henry, in that some of the, you know, the more popular routes that we find being either utilized or celebrated, and we talk about, you know, places in other parts of the world, but right here in Canada and in this region are naturalized. They're usually natural corridors that we've optimized. And I'm just wondering, through you, Chair, noting the, you know, the pressures from either the provincial government or the reality that, as councillor McDougall indicated, some of these roadways need to be upgraded significantly before you can put, you know, these transportation corridors on them. And then the safety concerns that are associated with Vision Zero, as councillor Crawford indicated. Wouldn't it be not just appropriate, but, you know, more strategic for us to move off of some of the roadways for now and on to the natural corridors? Optimize those, get those all in place, create that network, and then come off of them? I wouldn't say come off of them, but, you know, move forward with maybe the roadways that are being assessed through, you know, some of the applications that we have for development. Like you have site plans that will obviously inform the roadway expansions or, you know, the infrastructure that's needed. Because right now, that's the challenge that we face. It's like a three-pronged thing. You know, the reality that they're not ready, the understanding that we've got safety concerns on them. And then, you know, obviously, the fact that, I wouldn't say the need, but the actual use isn't as high as it would be on a natural corridor. So just through you, I know it's a long question, but are we optimizing natural corridors? Or are we doing this, like, is there a competing interest here between natural and roadways?
All right, through you, Mr. Chair. That's a good question. And I think through our 2021 Regional Cycling Plan, what we did is we sort of recognized some of the off-road connections as part of the primary cycling network. So, for example, the waterfront trail prior to 2021 was not considered part of the primary cycling network, but now it is. Same with, I think, sections or I think almost all of the Joseph Kaladzy Trail along Ashwa Creek. So some of those connections we've put into that network. So we would want to, I know there's existing signage, so we'd want to kind of co-brand or maybe put some wayfinding in those. And there are some other alternatives to the on-road in the network that are built in. The idea of the implementation in the wayfinding signage strategy is we would implement as facilities exist. So we wouldn't want to sign something where there's no facility or it's not compliant with the cycling guideline, like OTM Book 18. So we wouldn't want to just sign something and here you're in mixed traffic, here you go. I mean, sure, bicycles are still permitted on the roads, but that's not a comfortable environment for all users. So, yeah, just roll them out as we have a working group to look at where we would have those connections and identify like kind of maybe an area from A to B that we can connect in the existing network. And then as new facilities come on stream in new projects, the signage would get designed as part of them.
Okay, and I appreciate that because I think, you know, through you, Chair, you'll see, and you said comfortable, that these natural corridors, while comfortable, and even some of the asphalted sort of paths that are off the road, they're highly used and comfortable. But maybe, you know, the signage context of the equation, we should be looking at that through a different lens, more of like, you know, feeling comfortable and a sense of community by way of these signs. Because it kind of creates that, it kind of keeps you company as you're, it sounds silly because we've got GPS and some, you know, ride to sort of distract themselves. But, you know, seeing these signs and alluding to where you're supposed to go, not to go, or what direction or, you know, place you're going to encounter, it wouldn't be any different than traffic signs that we see on highways or on roads. And the sense of community, even some of the signage that we see as gateway features that we have. So I get through you, Chair, that some may consider it a waste, maybe even a sense of this sort of, you know, process. But I do think that there's value added when you look at it from the general and just bigger picture context. So I guess the last question would be, do we have an opportunity to see some of these medley of signs? Is there another presentation or something that you can send us just to take a look at? What we're look, you know, what we're going to be, because I'll say this through you, Chair. We're typically asked, you know, what's the deal with those signs? Or why these traffic signals for cyclists and pedestrians now? We get these questions, and we just need contacts to be able to offer answers to the public because they are valid questions. There are people that don't agree with this stuff, so we need to be able to offer them at least the facts.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so the, we have that family suite, we call it, of the wayfinding signage report that you saw, right? But I think what you're getting at is more, and we have those little examples that we brought in the, you may not have seen them when you came in. Those were from our second open house.
Very nice.
Were prepared for us. In terms of, I think what you're asking is, okay, like, you have that suite of signs. And then what does that look like on the ground if you're implementing? So that's what, one of the next steps is to, you know, form a working group with the area municipalities and conservation authority or other agencies. And then looking at, okay, what does this look like? Where do you have, you know, the wayfinding, you know, this destination, so many kilometers or so many meters? And, you know, and having that implemented. But the suite is kind of the look and feel of what we're going for. And then, yeah, we'll map out what that looks like for implementation as we go forward and try to get, you know, some of these signed over the next, you know, several years as budget permits.
Great, just the last of my three questions, Chair. The signage, is that activated by way of GPS? Is there something that on a mobile device, you'll be able to, kind of like when you're driving and you get to see, you know, speed limits change on your indicators? Is that something that is then going to activate technology? Because I think there's something asked about barcodes or scan codes. But I'm just wondering if you just have a device, whether or not you're going to be able to pick up these signs on the device? Or is that something a little bit?
That's a good question. I'll turn that over to Kate to describe it a bit better.
Through you, Chair, the answer is no. It's not connected through the mapping. But it doesn't mean that there are opportunities for the region and the local municipalities to improve their mapping and relate it to this network, but no.
Okay, for now, that we're not there yet. Okay, got it, thank you. Thanks, Chair Henry.
Thank you, councillor MacAtee.
Thank you, through you, Chair, I'll be brief. I have a couple of questions. First one being about the collaboration between the lower-tier municipalities and the region. I'm going to give you an example. Durham 23 has no on-road cycling that's really safe in my mind. And, you know, a lot of cyclists will go from South Whitby to Durham Forest, and they're traveling through four, potentially four different municipalities. How does that look when we're talking about wayfinding signage for the region? We probably don't want to encourage people to ride their bike up or down Durham 23 to get to the forest. So we're trying to, you know, help them get over to Ashburn Road, let's say, through Skugog and then through Whitby. So is the D going to follow that route? Or are we going to have different municipality wayfinding signage combined with the D? I'm just a little concerned about confusion because you're riding a bike and you don't want to go three kilometers out of your way because you've made a wrong turn, so.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. I'll start that response, and if Danielle, you want to add anything. So for Lakewood Road, the sections that are part of the primary cycling network is, I believe, between Highway Two and Bailey. And then there's a little piece that's part of the primary cycling network that connects Columbus Road to Concession Seven, where it's an existing facility already. But other than that, it's a paved shoulder, but it's not part of the PCN. So we wouldn't sign those parts. We would sign the parts of Lakewood that are the PCN and the other parts we wouldn't. So obviously, your hardcore recreational rider may choose to ride up Lakewood, but it's not part of the PCN. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't, hopefully, they would, the majority of cyclists would use parts that are part of the PCN, like you said, Ashburn.
So, sorry, supplementary. So how would we, is it up to the local municipalities then to indicate that you go across Durham 23? Like, when we get to that road, like, there's, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not confusing people and...
So Columbus Road, although it's kind of closed now at the bridge, but when it's open again, it's part of the primary cycling network, and that's a town of Whitby Road, as you know. So the idea is that the cycling wayfinding signage would be implemented by the area municipality using the branding and all that, that's part of the strategy. And it would be part of that overall working group, and we would collaborate on that. Did you have anything to add, Danielle?
Just, I guess, more taking a step back in terms of, because you did raise a point about just if if there's existing signage, say, at a local level, given that each municipality is at a different stage when it comes to wayfinding signage, what we tried to do here is if you don't have any, this is something we can all get behind. We included all eight municipalities through the design and look and feel and built on what's already there, what we can see today, so that this is not going to look so, it'll be distinct enough, but look more collective when put on the ground so that it's complementary as opposed to conflicting with other things. And I think to, you know, a point earlier as well is we want to be strategic with where we use these proposed signs versus what's already existing or where municipalities may already have something in place. I think that's the point of the working group and being more collaborative in the spirit of implementation so that it is not going to confuse the user. The whole point is to make it easier to navigate, not harder. And I think through the suite of signs, it just helps level the playing field, no matter what stage we're at and where we're going and how the network evolves overall. This should be a cohesive system, and that's one of our key goals through this. So there shouldn't be that conflict between the different signs, and you won't see that littering effect in the way that we intend to implement.
Okay, thank you. And just one quick question further, please, through you, Chair. The provincial book, the guidelines, our Active Transportation Committee at our local level isn't a fan of some of the guidelines in that book because, you know, we've had some sign blight issues where we've put up way too many signs. So, you know, I'm just hoping that we're not following it rigidly, that we're being, you know, respectful of the fact that, as councillor Crawford said, if you put up too many, they don't see them. So just looking for that confirmation.
Well, and through you, Chair, you know, that, that's okay. That's not our intent. Our intent is not to, is to be strategic with where we place these based on the context. And that's part of the approach we took. So that this will be, when we're looking to implement, we will take that context-specific approach of what signs do we need and where are they needed based on the inventory that's available? So if area municipalities already have signage on the ground, we will work with what's there. There will be, there could also be cases where we don't need to implement something for quite some time, or perhaps it's that co-branding medallion. Just because we offer this suite doesn't mean you're going to see every single sign type at a specific juncture along the way. We're really trying to feed into the network so that we're following guidelines and what's going to keep people safe and visible and make it easy to navigate. But we're not there to create any clutter or put things in that don't need to be there.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Woo.
Yeah, the Chair, and thank you very much, Chris, and Danielle, and Kate. Now, I, just to follow up on councillor MacAtee here, and I think, Danielle, you answered that. With the project timeline, spring to summer 2024, that's on slide nine, key milestones. So some of that, is that where you spoke about sign placement? When you're looking at this strategically?
Oh, we don't have it up. Sorry, we're just going to double-check the slides so that we make sure we answer your question properly.
Now, the reason why I ask that, because you're not replacing every sign. There will be some signage along route. Yep, so you've already talked key milestones, you've already spoken about sign placements. So you have a rough idea. I'm, if you can, give me an idea along the routes of the primary cycling network where you plan on putting signage or replacing signage?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, that's a good question. So in the strategy, we didn't go to that level of detail in terms of, you know, exactly where each sign is going to go. That's going to take sort of a project-by-project approach with the working group. And Clarrington staff would be part of that working group. So if we were looking to implement cycling wayfinding signage on a component of the primary cycling network in Clarrington, we would come up with, using the sign family and the strategies in this document, we would go, okay, we want to put, you know, a destination sign here and a co-branding sign here. And then we would implement it for those areas. We would start with that, you know, section from A to B. But in this strategy, it was just, it was a bit too, I guess, much into the weeds to go through that level of detail in terms of, you know, in terms of figuring out the signs. That's why we don't know if we need, you know, 24 of kiosks and 86 of this. Like, we haven't got to that level. But the idea is through this framework, we can do that on a sort of a working route case-by-case basis as we can, you know, implement them over time.
Okay, so if you haven't gotten down, got down to the finer details, because within that development of the implementation materials, you spoke about cost estimate. So you haven't got down to the granular to what it may cost or the funding that Clarrington will have to provide?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, that's true. We do have estimates for the different sign types and what each one would cost on a per-unit basis. And we would use that. And the idea, I think, is we would regionally have a certain amount of, you know, okay, we might be able to use this much funding, and then we'll implement that. And then for new projects that are, you know, for new facilities going forward, we could, you know, include that as well as a separate item. So that's kind of how we envision it rolling out. And then, but yeah, we don't have a specific cost estimate at this time, you know, for the overall implementation.
Okay, thank you. And through the Chair, just my last question, and I find on slide seven, the network. And we're looking at 2040 primary cycling network. Now, in that, there's the big light bulb. Do we have 1,000 kilometers of cycling facilities within the primary cycling network?
Through you, Chair, no. So we don't have that, that's what we're working towards. So what you're seeing here is the vision for the network. And so while we do have a series of routes completed today, that's what we're working towards. So at the end of the lifetime of that, by, I believe, 2041 is our timeline there. That's what we would expect to see, and that's what we're striving towards to implementing.
Okay, so we're working towards 1,000 kilometer, what are we at now on the PCN?
I, yes, that's, yeah, good question. So I think I have to look back, but I, we have like the regional component, and then we have the other components. So I'll have to look back, but I thought we were somewhere around the 200-kilometer mark, if I'm not mistaken. But I don't want to quote that for sure, but something in that neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, 1,000 kilometers, something to look for, too. Thank you.
Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair, and most of my questions have been answered by, well, they were asked by councillor MacAtee. But I'll ask a couple of questions. When you did this or devised this, did you work with the Active Transportation folks and the cycling clubs? I know there is a cycling club in Ashwood, and there's one in Curtis Row as well. Was this done in consultation with those folks?
Sure, so the approach we took was a fairly wide approach in terms of how we engaged. So we had our project review team, and that was a series of, I'd say, more technical experts, of which we had representation from the Durham Active Transportation Committee. We also hosted our Public Information Centre sessions, both virtual... We also hosted our Public Information Centre sessions, both virtually and online, where we circulated these materials to different groups and the cycling community more broadly. And we also had our project webpage where we were able to engage more directly with, with those with special interests, such as local cycling clubs and the like, to gather their feedback, to make sure that this is representative of a range of different users and perspectives.
Okay, one follow-up question. So have you reached out to the lower-tier municipalities as well as the conservation authorities yet about this proposal, yeah?
Through you, Chair, yeah, so throughout the development of the, the entirety of this work, we have worked with area municipalities quite closely. They are part of our project review teams, we had representation from each of the area municipalities to sit and inform each stage of this process. And we look forward to continuing to collaborate with them as we look forward to implementing this more broadly.
One more question, Chair. Would the goal be to have uniformity of signage throughout Durham region? Is that the end goal?
I think we want to have consistency, right? So what we wanted to do from the onset of this, knowing that different municipalities and players are at different stages in terms of whether they have signage or they have a strategy that hasn't yet been implemented or in that, that development process, we really wanted to create something that would work for all stages, no matter where people are at. So I think that this will be collaborative, and the goal is for cohesion. So I think we'll have to work together to implement what we're proposing here from a regional perspective, but also how that can complement some of those more localized identities. This is really meant to reflect the range of municipalities and perspectives within the region. So I think perhaps it's not uniformity, but consistency and cohesion.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Burton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I love that we're having these conversations. I think the signage looks great. And, you know, we're, in Oxbridge, we have a lot of cyclists already. Because we have so many cyclists, we, we also have road conflict between, you know, our, our agr-, our farmers putting heavy equipment on the roads, we're fairly narrow lanes where we are, they, they like the hilly rural roads, which visibility is tough. So it's, it's great, but there's lots of issues that we need to deal with and, and kind of work through. We want to make sure that we're doing this as safely as we possibly can. And I think we should be really focusing off-road wherever we, wherever we can as well. So there's lots of changes happening. We've got, obviously, the waterfront trail that you spoke of, the Ashwell Creek Trail that councillor McDougall took me on a tour of a few years ago. But lots of changes now with the Rouge, the, the trail system with the Rouge is phenomenal in through Pickering and Stovall Markham, and then in Oxbridge, it's just unbelievable. Then with connections with the Oxford Urban Provincial Park that we're working really closely on, you may want to update, update your slides with, with Ontario Parks as well. You mentioned Parks Canada, but not Ontario Parks, so that's going to be a significant change in the north moving forward. But I think wherever possible, we should be focusing on doing trails that are more like roads, that you might be able to take road-style bikes on and getting those off-road. So just something to think about as we push through this, because, you know, we heard from councillor McDougall, we have some of those same concerns on our rural roads that have, take heavy gravel trucks and heavy agricultural traffic. We can't always prevent significant potholes and things like that, and we run into a significant amount of risks when you have, you know, one-inch tires on roads like that, kind of concern. So let's continue to work together, I like, like where you're going, but let's try and focus off-road wherever we can. And I know I didn't necessarily ask a question, Mr. Chair, but I, I just, I want to make sure that lens is, is heard loud and clear.
Through you, Chair, if you don't mind me responding to the comment there. I think another opportunity there that's recommended in the strategy is route prioritization, right? So I think that this is where we can bring those conversations into play in terms of determining where do we want to start. And hearing some of your comments, we can find some of those common ground areas of, of where we see most value, where these signs could be warranted, and to, I guess, support the different users and trip types that we're already seeing today.
Okay. Follow-up, Mayor Burton?
Not really, I just, let's keep working on this through public works, through all these pieces, and, and remember that it needs to be seamless, and it won't only be on regional roads, but we need to fund some, find ways to fund this, because, you know, budgets are really tough, especially when you get into the north. But these, this is an overall play for the region and a regional connectivity. So I think we may want to look at these like regional roads, no matter where they are, and put that kind of resources to them. But lots more work to do, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so the report in front of us is, is wayfinding. The, the majority of discussion, the vast majority of discussion has been around the network itself. I, I know that staff pay attention, but are we going to have a discussion on, on what the PCN is? I'm hearing far more comments of concerns of, you know, the, the shape of road, the cost of maintaining roads, whether we should be on a road or not, which isn't, isn't actually part of, of what we're chatting about here. So are staff coming back with something on the cycling network? And hopefully, after having had discussion with the local municipalities?
Okay, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So we're looking at this implementation of the cycling wayfinding signage on the primary cycling network, which is included in the 2021 Regional Cycling Plan. And the, and we know that the primary cycling network, it consists of regional roads, has some local roads, it has a few off-road connections, parts of the water.
So, Chris, I, and I don't, I don't, I don't mean to be rude, but, so my, my, my point here is, so I, I understand the report, have read the report, you know, it's, it's wayfinding. But I think if you reflect on the questions that have been asked today, there, there are concerns about the cycling network itself. So are, are we making the appropriate connections or not on, on 23? You know, are, are the municipalities on side? Are we focusing off-road as opposed to on-road? So I would simply leave that, that thought with you, that I think most of the concerns that you're hearing from council today are less around the, the wayfinding strategy than it is perhaps around the PCN itself. So I'll leave that with you.
Oh, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just, I, I understand your question a bit more clearly now, councillor Foster. So, yes, you know, we work, you know, through our capital, you know, works program. We have an infill piece in our annual budget now to implement the standalone projects that aren't tied to a road widening or reconstruction. So through those, and then the area municipalities have their budgets to implement, you know, the local components of the primary cycling network. So we're working, you know, to fill those gaps and to make the network more expensive. And so, you know, and we do have an active transportation annual report. We had one from last year, we're going to look at one, you know, early next year to report on progress of how we're doing and how those connections are, are being achieved. I hope that helps answer your question.
Not, not really, I, I, I think there may be, and it may be worthwhile talking with members of council and the municipalities. There may be substantive differences of opinion as to where the PCN is. So I, you know, I know that came out a couple of years ago, but we'll, we'll leave it at that. We can, we can talk offline on that. And I might be mistaken, but I'm hearing more concerns about the network itself than, you know, great work on this, thank you, but more concerns about, you know, where cyclists are actually using roads. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner of Planning and Economic Development, Mr. Bridgman.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everyone. Mayor Foster, just in response to your question, just to clarify, the primary cycling network was established through a robust consultation process that found its way, as Chris and Danielle had said, into the 2021 Regional Cycling Plan. That primary cycling network has been reviewed, presented to council on, and approved by council. So we can, Mayor Foster, gladly give a refresher on the, on the primary cycling network, how it came to be, all the consultation that went in behind it. I can assure you, it has been discussed at some length with area municipalities, going back to that 2020, 2021 timeframe. And again, this wayfinding strategy was one of the recommendations from that cycling plan in 2021, including the established primary cycling network.
Okay, Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, Mr. Bridgman, thank you for the information. We, we've, I'm probably not articulating myself clearly enough, but I, but I, I will repeat the observation that I think, and I'll stop. I, I think that most of the questions and concerns that you have had in this meeting have been around the network itself, whether there needs to be an update. And don't do it for me, I, I could be mistaken, but my impression here is most of the questions are around the network, the, the wayfinding and strategy, wonderful. And, and I, I will, I will leave it at that. But on, on my behalf, you, you, you don't need to re-educate me on, on how we, we got to the, the PCN. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McDougall, could you push a button, please? Councillor McDougall.
Thank you, just to follow Mayor Foster's comments and to keep this to a question, was it clearly articulated to the lower-tier municipalities that by encouraging their roads, which are wonderful and great cycling routes or trails, to be included in the network, that they would fully bear the costs of such participation in that network? And by alleviating the region to not have their roads identified, allowing the region to not bear the cost of those routes? So, for example, having Ashburn identified as a cycling route instead of, say, Lakewood Road, the lower tiers then are, are going to fully pay the cost of that and increase their minimum maintenance standards, increase their cost for signage, et cetera. Was that instructed to the lower-tier municipalities through that process, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bridgman?
I'll turn it back to, to Chris and Danielle, please, but I'm sure it was.
That's all, thank you.
Yes, um, yes, we shared the draft strategy, once it had internal review with area municipalities, and yes, they were, they were aware of that.
I'll go to our CEO.
I don't know that I can specifically answer the councillor's question, but I think, I feel quite comfortable in saying we did not intentionally move the cycling routes onto local roads to avoid costs. We're trying to make it the most effective and safest network possible for all residents of Durham.
Councillor McDougall, you're good? Okay, that exhausts the speaker's list, so thank you very much for the presentation. Mr. Glass, could you come down to the podium, please? So I have a couple of questions for you, so, or some comments before we move on. I appreciate the presentations that you sent, but you sent them on Monday, and we were closed on Monday for Remembrance Day. So I appreciate the, the presentations that you sent, both for us and, and police, but they were sent on Monday, and we were closed Monday. And our rules of procedure, I wasn't notified till yesterday afternoon that you requested to, to speak. So the challenge that we have here, may I finish?
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
I was, I'm not crashing the meeting today. I just, I, I was, you've spoken about process to all the councillors and using committees.
And that's what I'm speaking about now.
I was on the finance committee, agenda that was canceled.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
I, I asked to bring this forward to this committee, and I sent the presentation.
I'm aware of that, but the ask came in to us yesterday, Mr. Clerk? The slide deck was sent on Monday.
That was the, the time that I was told, so.
Yes, so just so you're aware, procedurally, you have to be able to address an item on today's agenda, and there is no item related to your delegation, just so you know that. And you are a resident of Durham region, right?
Yes, HX.
So procedurally, in order for you to speak to your two delegations today, which would be two separate delegations, it would take two-thirds of this council to agree to your presentation. Before I call for that, did you take the opportunity to talk to either the police or our financial staff with anything related to your delegations?
No.
That's, that's fine. So members of council, there are.
I did try to go through the finance committee, though, but it was canceled.
We're aware that you tried, but you didn't make that meeting, and now we're to this meeting.
No, no, it was canceled.
Oh, for the council meeting, I'm sorry, I appreciate that. So, members of council, so you're aware, it will take two-thirds, and there are two, two delegations, because we'll have to divide the two, one for us and one for police. It'll take a two-thirds motion to hear Mr. Glass. Mayor Collier.
Chair, I've submitted a motion to refer to the clerk. I believe that will come forward if this two-thirds passes.
Yes, I'll come to you after that.
Thank you, I just wanted to know whether I should move that motion now or.
You can't move it till it's on the floor.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, it would take two-thirds, if I'm correct, not simple majority, and it would take, I'm going to call for a recorded vote, because we have a number of members of councils, councillors online, so I'll call for the recorded vote. So councillor Chapman, would, would, would you move to suspend the rules to hear Mr. Glass? Okay, thank you, I need a sec, secondary by councillor Anderson, so. Uh, no, we'll do them for, recognizing that there's two delegations, no sense of movement twice, we're going to move them all at once, if that's okay? Okay, I'm getting a nod, so we're doing that on both presentations. On the, on the motion to hear, we need two-thirds, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, recorded vote on the motion to suspend the rules to hear the two unscheduled delegations is starting now. Looking for councillors Cook and Nicholson online. Second call for councillors Cook and Nicholson. Last call for councillor Cook.
Okay, so that's two-thirds. So you've received the two-thirds to be heard now, Mayor Collier.
Thank you, Chair. Many of you may have noticed, I left to go upstairs at 10:15 for another pretty important meeting at 10:30 with police business, but then I received the copy of this 23-page delegation.
Don't speak to it, if you've got a motion.
Well, I did ask the clerk, under the new policy, we can't speak to her for a motion.
I apologize, you're right.
There's a significant number of statistics and questions in this presentation. I'd like to have the opportunity to have the RPS staff review and have the chief and staff present to answer any questions. As you said correctly, Chair, this delegation request is not on the agenda, it's not on the addendum, and it's not related to any matter on the agenda. So I'd move that this item be referred to the, and, Mr. Clerk, you have the motion.
So you're moving both?
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Woo, that this matter be referred to the special December 12th committee of the whole budget meeting.
So you're, you're moving both delegations?
Yes.
Okay, so the referral is in order, I'm look, it has been duly moved and seconded. Councillor Chapman?
Couldn't it be a deferral, then it would automatically go on the agenda? A referral just goes.
Yeah, it, a deferral is fine, getting a nod. Okay, any other, councillor Yamada?
Thank you, just clarification, if this motion goes through, the delegate doesn't speak today?
Doesn't speak today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so members of council, again, there's a number online, I'll call for a recorded vote on the referral.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on the deferral motion is starting now.
So on the deferral to that meeting, it is 20 to 6, so it carries, so it's been referred to the budget meeting, Mr. Glass. And in the meantime, I will just give you the option to reach out to both the police and our staff to have a conversation about your presentations, but that's your option.
Thank you. What's that date again?
It's December 12.
Great. Thank you.
Members of council, it's been over two hours. I know that I can use a break, and I'm sure staff and you can use a break, so may I suggest, thank you, Counselor Chapman, a 10-minute recess. Moved and seconded by Counselor Kerr. On the 10-minute recess, all those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, we are in recess. We'll make it easy to 12.
I will call this meeting back to order. Mr. Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
We have quorum, so we'll move on now to reports. We have three reports in today's agenda. I would look for a consent agenda on the reports, moved by councillor McDougall, seconded by councillor Anderson. Are there any polls? Mr. Clerk, I see none. Okay, so I'll call the vote on reports seven point one, two, and three. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. We'll move on to item number eight, starting on page seventy-three of your agenda. There are number three notices of motion. Just give me one second. The first notice of motion is requesting the redistribution of provincial land transfer tax and GST to municipalities for sustainable infrastructure funding. It's moved by councillor Leahy and councillor Yamada, correct? Looking for nods. You're still willing to proceed with this? Okay, this is a fairly long, um, long, uh, motion. Councillor Leahy, did you wish to speak to this?
Yeah, I'll just speak to it, no need.
Sorry, wait a second. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just speak to it. No need to read it, I think. It's self-explanatory, if that's okay with you?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So, thank you, members of council. Just, I think it's just important for us to show our solidarity with other municipalities that are doing this advocacy effort with the, uh, the province and, uh, and the federal government. Like, as we all know, it's, we're singing from the same song sheet all the time. We, uh, municipalities own about fifty percent of the infrastructure but have nine percent of the revenue, and we are constantly behind in, uh, in revenue tools to make up for our funding gaps, as we all see through our budgets, and a lot of us are going through our budget processes right now at the, uh, in our local area municipalities at the region. So, just looking for everyone's support to try and continue to lobby and advocate the, uh, the provincial government for access to part of the land transfer tax, and of course, the federal government to get sustainable access to, uh, goods and services tax, because we're, again, one of the only OECD countries that has no revenue tools, no retail and sales tax tools for municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Yamada is the seconder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy to support and second this motion, because, uh, it's, looking for additional means of funding is really important to help, uh, municipalities be successful, whether it's, uh, a portion of the GST or land transfer tax. I think to be able to have more sustainable, uh, long-term funding will, uh, help us in our long-term, uh, planning, uh, to deliver exceptional services, uh, for the residents, uh, we serve. Uh, everywhere I go and I talk to people at the door, I always still hear about property taxes and, and the increase to property taxes. And, and so when we see other programs that divert, uh, maybe it's downloading from federal or provincial governments and, and asking municipalities, as I've heard, uh, in, in this chamber and in town hall many times, that, you know, we're being asked to do more, but we have less to do it with. So, if there's, uh, a way that we can, uh, advocate for, uh, a little bit more of the pie, I'd be happy to, uh, support that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Schumer?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Uh, the sound is much better now, yes.
Oh, okay, that's great. Um, I, I do support the motion. I fully understand where it's coming from. I think we all do. Um, however, and I, uh, you know, these aren't, this isn't the first motion like this. It probably won't be the last, but I think it's important to remember and put into each of these motions to remind the provincial government, uh, what I think all municipalities have asked for, as well as AMO has asked for, and that is a new funding arrangement and definition, uh, with the province. Um, because that's really where a lot of this is coming from, right? I mean, we're not getting a, a proper funding formula with the province. We're paying for things that, that is provincial responsibility, so now we're asking for more money from, from other sources of, of revenue that also were not designed, uh, necessarily to go towards things that we might be asking for. So, again, I, I support the motion, but I think we've always got to put into these motions a reminder to the province that we need a new funding arrangement, and I, and I'll say it again from what happened at AMO this past August, is, uh, the ministers were asked about this, and, uh, the, both the Minister of Finance and the, uh, you know, Minister of, uh, for Municipal Affairs and Housing indicated that that's been done. They, uh, they did not think that the question that was put to them regarding this was proper, because the, the funding arrangement has been taken care of, and, uh, both AMO, uh, has confirmed it has not, and I think we're all confirming it has not. So, uh, I think that's got to be, uh, into each of these motions is a reminder to the province that, uh, the, uh, funding arrange with, with municipalities has to be seriously readdressed, and I would move, uh, a friendly amendment to include that, uh, statement, uh, in the motion.
Okay, um, Mayor Schumer, you spoke a lot. Can you make your, your statements succinct, please?
Okay, I guess I, uh, as far as the amendment, I, I would, uh, move that an amendment be, uh, added to this, uh, that the, uh, province has been asked by AMO and member municipalities to develop a new and, uh, comprehensive funding arrangement with municipalities, and, uh, that, uh, you know, these, these requests will, will stop when that funding arrangement is, is finally made.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, were you able to capture that amendment? And on the amendment, we need a seconder. Okay, seconded by, um, councillor Pickles. Okay, so I, I have a long list of, of people wishing to speak. Is, is, just show hands. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the amendment? Okay, I'm gonna ask if the clerk could possibly please put the amendment on the screen, and Mayor Foster, on the amendment, I saw your hand move, so could you push your, um, your button to speak, please? Okay, thank you. Okay, so the amendment. So, Mayor Schumer, does that, that clerk has captured what you said? Are you comfortable with, uh, five points, five point six? Five point one? Five point six, okay. No, it's number six, sorry. That's the problem with mature glasses. Okay, um, Mayor Schumer? Did I capture?
Yes, I'm, I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mayor Foster on the amendment.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I, I've, I've, I've got to agree with everything that Mayor Schumer's, uh, said. I, uh, I almost wonder, and certainly we can pass this now, I, I wonder if, if, uh, some sort of motion, uh, at a later date, when we've, when we've got an opportunity to think about it, uh, requesting that, that the province, uh, somehow address the, uh, the statements that we've been made whole, uh, when we don't see it. So, we're, we're hearing that from AMO exactly to, to Mayor Schumer's, uh, comments on this. Um, but, uh, you know, as was stated, um, I, over my time as a councillor, I don't know how many times, uh, we have gone to the province and federal government, uh, stating that we need sustainable funding that is not, uh, dependent on property taxes, and, and we all know the reasons why that does not work. Um, but we, we, we never get a response. I guess to be fair, we don't ask for response. Uh, we can remind the province, but I, I wonder if we need to be a little bit, um, a little bit more forceful, and this, this could perhaps be something coming forward at a future date, uh, requesting that the, uh, that the province, uh, federal government explain to us, uh, in detail, uh, and be, um, that, and I'm not suggesting this as a, uh, as an amendment now, it's, it's just gonna get too messy. Um, but, uh, again, at a future date, um, that, uh, that we require responses. When, when we send motions like this, they don't drop into a, a black hole somewhere, which is pretty much what I, what I figure happens. So, uh, the amendment's good, the motion's good, but I, I think there needs to be more accountability, uh, from the province and the federal government. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor McCaughy, could you push your button, please, on the amendment?
Yes, thank you. Um, I asked AMO for their position, um, to, in advance of today, just to see, uh, if it was aligned, and, and I'd like to read what they sent back to me, if, if you don't mind. Um, AMO doesn't have a position on land transfer tax equality and hasn't discussed it with the board since two thousand and fifteen, when the province was considering feedback on whether tax tools available to Toronto should be available for all municipalities. Since then, AMO's advocacy has focused on the Housing Affordability Task Force recommendations, since that is where the province's focus is, advocating for long-term and predictable infrastructure funding and supporting ongoing discussions around the importance of the development charge regime in funding housing-enabling infrastructure in many communities. So, I think that if, if, um, Mayor Schumer is, uh, amenable to it, that we should consider that in his amendment, that we include, um, a sort of a focus that's also sort of in line with where AMO is at. So, um, I'll, I'll leave it to him to agree or disagree, but perhaps we could, um, make sure that we include, um, long-term predictable infrastructure funding and, and development charge-related, um, funding as well.
So, uh, to the mover of the motion, Mayor Schumer. You, you, Mayor Schumer, you heard what councillor McCaughy has said?
Uh, I, I did, and, uh, it was kind of the reason I, I used the words, uh, you know, comprehensive. Um, uh, but I'm, I'm open if we want to get a little bit more specific in there, but, uh, you know, the reason I use the word comprehensive is there are so many facets of, of provincial and federal, but, you know, we're concentrating on provincial, but there's so many facets of it, um, that, yes, I can, I can agree to certainly including that language.
So...
So, if I may, if I may, um, I think the, the, the key quote would be Housing Affordability Task Force recommendations. Because that encompasses all of, all of what AMO is looking at.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking to the... Just give us one second, please.
Councillor McCaughy, could you please repeat the, uh, specific language?
Housing affordability task force recommendations.
Okay, Mr. Clerk. Um, Mayor Schumer, councillor Pickles, are you okay with how the amendment is now written?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, any other member of council wishing to speak to the amendment? Mr. Clerk, I don't see any hands online, and I have none here, so I'm gonna call the vote on the amendment. All, no, uh, councillor Mayor Piatturi wants to speak on the motion, not the amendment. Okay, so on the amendment, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, in opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Councillor Mayor Piatturi on the main motion as amended.
So, I'd like to commend the movers, because I think we're of like mind. All of us are looking to understand what we can do to be able to provide affordability at the local level. Um, and I think that, you know, most looking at, uh, local infrastructure needs, um, service, uh, you know, expenditures associated with programs and just the overall core provision, um, may likely, you know, suggest that we have enough money to do so, and, and that we shouldn't require any further funding. Um, but, you know, I think, just as in anyone else's, uh, business or household, we've had, uh, you know, a really difficult time with, uh, a number of the expenses that have increased over the last few years. Uh, it's not to say that we can't do things better. We should and we will, but one of the things I'd, I'd like to, through you, Chair Henry, suggest is, and I've been around long enough to remember how the discussion that we undertook to get gas tax money, uh, from, you know, other levels of government with organizations like, like AMO and, you know, discussions at FCM, it was a more succinct request, and I'm, I'm just gonna preface it and say that it wasn't just simply we want more money, we want a better, uh, funding mechanism, we want to create a new funding strategy, or we want a, a new, um, you know, financial sort of deal. Because if I were in the, in the shoes of the province, just as in our own shoes, when we're, when we're asked about, we want better this or that, it would be helpful when we ask for what we want to be specific, and maybe that's happening at AMO, and maybe it's gonna happen at FCM with other, um, you know, municipalities in the country, but I, I do think we need to scope down our own financial ask, figure out what that is, what it looks like, consult with the public, uh, in, in an open way, and say, the, these tools, these specific tools are the ones that we're asking the province for, because it becomes more difficult if you're asking for X to say no, um, because it's clear and, and it's defined. Uh, I think we're generally asking for something that I'm sure that we can get some help from, uh, the province with, but, uh, like, again, if I were in their shoes, I'd say, what is it specifically that you want to activate as a financial tool in order to help yourselves? And, again, I'm not, you know, criticizing, I'm just saying that maybe it's time for us internally here to, to have a specific session, uh, where we discuss what tools we could actually realistically attain, and go after those tools in a very focused way when we are at, um, different conferences or in front of ministers and, and decision-makers at provincial and federal levels. Uh, I, I would suggest that some of the tools are, are gonna be impossible, um, so let's take them off the table right off the bat, because it just sounds like political rhetoric at times, and the ones that are, um, you know, activational, we can actually get buy-in from the province, uh, we, we work on those, and, and I'm sure the federal government will be looking to see, you know, what it is, and I think a maiden durum solution could help, because I hear the same thing over and over. Um, you know, we, we, we watch, you know, CP twenty-four, we read, uh, whether on social media or in the newspaper about, uh, you know, some of the things that Toronto asks for. Uh, good for them, uh, but it's not, uh, something that is, uh, specific to the needs or the benefit or the, um, uh, the pressures of our municipality and others like ours. So, I, I do fundamentally believe that we need a, a discussion on specific solutions that, uh, can be activated, uh, by the province. And then, at, at that point, uh, you know, Chair, if the province then, or whatever the entity is, isn't able to provide it to us, they'll have to answer as to why. is, isn't able to provide it to us, they'll have to answer as to why. And at that point, we can understand whether our intentions were realistic, or whether we need to retool what we're asking for. But I just have a problem, and I'll be, you know, I'll wrap up by saying, I have a big problem, as anyone else would on the outside, understanding or validating what we're asking for without knowing specifically what it is that we can get. And I think some will say, well, if you don't ask, you don't get. But people have to know what you're asking for. And I'm sure that they're not going to volunteer those tools, because that's revenue that they're going to forego. And I say "they," it's got nothing to do with political parties or governments, it's just a fact of life. If the city of Oshawa's asking for extra revenue from the region of Durham, the region of Durham's not exactly forthcoming, because this is revenue that's going to be foregone by the region and has to be replaced. Same thing happens at the province and the federal government. But if it's a business case built on a specific ask, that can then, you know, essentially give you a higher and better use, or provides you with, you know, further assessment for, you know, some of the revenues that the region of Durham can enjoy, then I think it becomes a discussion. So I guess in closing, I'd just like to see us have an internal discussion about advancing specific requests.
Mr. Clerk, that exhausts the speakers' lists. Did the mover and seconder wish a recorded vote? No, show of hands? Okay. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. There's a next motion moved by, it's on Motion Regarding Automated Speed Enforcement Systems. Moved by councillor Chapman, seconded by councillor Mayor Pietri. Councillor Chapman, I'm wondering, just for my clarification, on the second-to-last paragraph, it says ASE Systems on Any Highway. Did you mean on any road, or are you specific to highway?
Well, they're called highways.
Sorry, wait a second.
They're called highways, municipal highways. Am I correct, Commissioner?
Like, a local road in a community?
It includes local roads, roads, streets, but I think the Highway Traffic Act talks about highways, right?
It does, through the chair, but I think if we are more focused on municipal, for example, Highway 7, which is a provincial highway, you know, usually goes by the term highway, and I'm assuming your inference is mostly for regional and local municipal roads.
So if we, yeah, if we want to include, I'm looking for roads and streets, but my definition of a highway has always been, a road is a highway from...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that...
So let's make an amendment to it already that includes municipal highways, roads and streets, that's fine.
So that...
If it makes it more clear for...
It makes it clear to me, so that, so, and we're just, the seconder?
Yes.
Good. Councillor Chapman, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. The purpose behind this is, right now, ASEs are doing okay, changing the behavior of drivers and reducing speeds in certain areas. I know if you drive down certain roads where people know there's a speed camera, you see everybody slowing down, right? I mean, they should slow down before that, but they do that even before they get to the sign that says "coming soon," or whether it's there or not. But right now, in order to put an automated speed enforcement device up, it has to be designated as a community safety zone or a school zone. School zones are easy, and that's great. But a community safety zone has to be designated by bylaw, which has to come through a council, has to be passed by a council. So in order for the staff to monitor, which they do, the data on speeding in certain areas, I'm sure every other community has radar-type boards where they collect the data on what the speeds are on certain streets. And we have people that complain about, you know, everybody's doing 100 kilometers an hour down their street. The staff take that, at least in Oshawa, and I'm pretty sure they probably do it here too, the traffic people, and they look at it and say, yeah, there is a high rate of speed on this thing. But instead of coming back to council, or a councillor trying to suggest and change it to a community safety zone, this, by changing the Highway Traffic Act, would allow staff to put those cameras up on those roads that the data is supporting where they should be. Because it doesn't, it won't have to come through council and be bylaw. So it makes it easier. And it's a simple regulation in the Highway Traffic Act that the Minister of Transportation can change. It's not a whole big legislative process. The minister has the authority to change regulations and change that, instead of just allowing them on community safety zones which have to be bylaws. I think this will go a long way throughout all our communities, to put ASEs where they're needed, outside of community safety zones, to influence that driver behavior and reduce speeds and make those roadways safer. So I'd ask for everybody's support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Mayor Pietri is the seconder?
Yes.
Need to push your button. There we go.
Okay, thanks, Chair. Just to add to councillor Chapman's expertise on the matter, and I appreciate the motion, because it's going to help resolve a lot of the issues that we incur. And I think, you know, some of the discussions about community safety zones, as councillor Chapman mentioned, in a technical way, the more, you know, I guess, lay terms that were context that we typically deal with, is that we try to stretch the community safety zones to the point where they're not really community safety zones anymore. It's just to appease and to make sure that we capture the intent of the neighborhood and the community's concerns in terms of safety. This will allow us to do it in a more palatable, more legal, more, I guess, acceptable format, because, you know, having the community safety zone double for something that isn't is what typically gets us into the discussions of frustration with staff and the police and residents, too. Residents look at us and say, listen, what do you mean you can't put a safety zone here? Well, here's the criteria. They may understand it, but they don't like it, and it's not something that's been fruitful or, you know, it's caused contention, because I get, I get why, you know, some of these requests are being made. And they would like to see this stuff activated. I know that you, Chair, as well as other members of council, have these discussions, as I do, with, you know, residents. And while they may understand it, they are frustrated that we can't provide for them. This motion goes outside the box to be able to provide for not only community safety zones to be captured, but also areas that aren't classified or qualified as community safety zones. It also gives us an ability to showcase something that we've asked for. And as I was indicating before, specifics to the province, while it took some time to ask for specific tools, the province provided, because they were able to understand what specifically we required. And this tool, and I say it's a tool, because it is annoying when someone drives through a zone and gets a ticket, especially if they're distracted, or, you know, just, at any given time, getting any sort of fine is just annoying. But it's definitely a tool to help us understand that that particular area is of concern, and that we have to be careful when we're driving through there. So I know that there's a lot of apprehension or even contention as to how we use these tools, where we use these tools. But we found through the discussions in neighborhoods, as well as with staff and DRPS, because they can't be everywhere, police can't be everywhere, resources are stretched, we found that these tools are vital and they work. People actually slow down in these areas, because if they don't, they're going to be heavily ticketed. So if the key indicator is the speeds and, you know, individuals slowing down, if that causes people to be safer as a result, and I think the motion that councillor Chapman moved is a very good one, and it builds on what we're trying to do with Vision Zero and other tools that were being afforded by the discussions that we're having on specifics that we ask upper levels of governments for.
Thank you. Councillor Nicholson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Yeah, I apologize for that, but on this computer, if I put my video on, it knocks my sound off.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
So otherwise, my shining face would be there. I just wanted to support both councillor Chapman and councillor Pietri in their comments. I've been working with our staff at the region on a regional road called Harmony Road South, which is probably one of the most heavily-used roads in our city of Oshawa. It provides access to residents from North Oshawa, residents from Curtis, to access to 401 Highway. The speeds on that road are abominable. And the number of accidents, and unfortunately, and some fatalities that have occurred on that road, make it very clear to the area residents that we need action. The group that's best to determine whether a radar camera should be put on the local road is the local community and our professional staff. Expecting that we have a one-size-fits-all provincial regulation that meets every criteria in every community across the province is simply an unworkable solution, an unworkable regulation. As councillor Chapman indicated, the minister has the power. The minister, without going to Queen's Park, without going through legislation, the minister could, with a stroke of a pen, could amend the regulation and give local communities, at both the local level and at the regional level, the ability to use their own best judgment, and the best judgment of the professional staff, to address these issues. The current process, where we can solve a problem in a matter of days, takes months, if not years, to resolve, even if you can. On Harmony Road South, this is not a new issue, it's been going on for at least four to five years. And our staff are struggling to find ways to address this and to slow the speeds down. So we need this flexibility, we need this power. I mean, the province is quite good at downloading costs to us. Here's one download that I hope the province does pass on to us, and that's the ability to pass regulation, the ability to make decisions based on local needs, not simply have to ask provincial ministers for permission. The alternative to this, of course, and I've raised this with staff somewhat facetiously, but also partially seriously, is to declare every regional road in the region of Durham a community safety zone. And then we can put them up all we want. That doesn't help us on local roads. So I would simply ask for recorded votes so we can get it on record. I hope it's unanimous, I'd be shocked if it isn't. But I think it's important that we send a message, and we have to make sure that we also reach out to our local MPPs across Durham region and ask them to support approaching the Minister of Transport to get that regulation changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Chapman, I'm just looking for a nod. Can we include AMO in the direction on the bottom line? I'm sure you can include AMO in there, and you can put it all other municipalities in the bottom line. I think AMO does that, but we can do both. Mr. Clerk, thank you. Okay, councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair, and I just wanted to thank the mover and seconder for bringing this forward. It's, whether it's perceived or not, that a day doesn't go by that I don't get a complaint for speeding. And when I speak to officers, I said, what can I do about this? The number one answer is more speed enforcement cameras. So the officers want it, it's a good thing, it's, and community safety of our kids, et cetera, should be our number one priority. My question through the chair is, administratively, is this going to be, create a bigger problem? How is that going to be handled? I understand currently, right now, they have difficulty dealing with it from an administrative point of view.
Mr. Hunt?
Well, I think if the program is expanded, as maybe is proposed in the motion, then we would just make sure we had to marshal the resources available to support it. It may involve prioritization, but we would manage. I can say that we are projecting to go from two open POA courtrooms up to three into 2025. As well, we're currently working on a proposal that will come to council to set up administrative monetary penalty system, which is allowed to adjudicate these types of camera-based charges, which would then take it out of the POA court system, where we don't have control over the number of JPs that were assigned, and into a system that's completely controlled by the region and our own resources. So I do expect we would have the resources to meet this in the medium to long term.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Mayor Roy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I know that we've had this conversation previously about the cameras to be in place, and I just want to echo the support for this motion. But primarily hearing from many of our school communities and the school community zones, we see the results of what is already taking place, where we have regional roads by our schools, and the success of the slowing down. Anderson being a primary example of where we have a camera. But I can say, one of the number one priorities that we hear is especially around our school communities and in front of our schools, and this would be a huge asset to give the controls and put another tool in our toolbox. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Collier?
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to support this, but we have already, Ajax has already made this very, or made the minister very aware, even this most recently as AMO this summer, of this issue and of these restrictions, and of the effectiveness of photo radar, and asked for changes to be made to the Highway Traffic Act to be able to accommodate. If it was up to me, and I've told my planning staff we can't do it, I would do exactly what someone mentioned, and make the entire town a community safety zone, and then we can put them wherever we want. I'm told that's not allowed, because we have these signing requirements and all these other things we have to do. But I will support this, but they are already on this, they are already aware of this. We passed motions to this and submitted this, and gone a step further as far as asking for concessions so we can use other tools that are available, like the camera systems for automatic parking enforcement. So instead of parking officers, parking enforcement people or bylaw people having to get out and manually do this, there's technology where they can just drive by, and the camera system automatically checks the computer, does the thing, issues the ticket. You're not allowed to do that under the Highway Traffic Act, you have to print it and put it on the windshield. Same thing with parking enforcement in school drop-off zones, which is probably more dangerous than speeding. They have systems such as automated bollards that sit there with cameras in them, and if people park in front of the school, they automatically get generated a ticket. We can't use those in Canada. The Highway Traffic Act doesn't allow it. So it does go, if anything, I would like to see this go a step further and ask for those amendments to the Highway Traffic Act as well, which I've already asked for. And just to the AMS program, we've initiated an AMS program, I think a few other municipalities have done it. It very effective tool, the Solicitor General has been instrumental in making it a lot easier for municipalities to be able to get these things through. And if any of our municipalities haven't got these AMS programs and haven't started their own automatic speed enforcement programs, I would encourage them to do so. It is the only thing that works. We've gone, I've gone one step further in our own budgets and taken out any funding for any type of other traffic calming, because it's throwing money away. There was $100,000 in the budget every year that is useless. This is effective, I think the numbers are 42 or 43% or something like that, in reducing speeding. It does work, we do rotate them around, happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kerr?
Thank you, Chair, just two points. One of the advantages of being a ward city councillor, as well as a regional councillor, is that you get your thumb on the pulse at the constituent level. And I think we could ask every ward councillor what the number one issue in their ward is, and the vast majority would say speeding. And I get the requests all the time, and in Oshawa, we have five radar messaging boards, and all mine are out all the time. So I don't know when people are going to get the message. It started during COVID, when there were way fewer vehicles on the road, and everybody thought, yee-haw, and the speeding levels went way up. And then when the traffic volumes came back, people had a headache of a time slowing down, and I don't think a lot of them have chosen to slow down enough since. So for the safety of our residents, I think this is a good motion to have, and of course, there will be two sides. If this goes through and gets implemented, the one side will say this is nothing but a cash grab, and the other side will simply say, slow down, follow the speed limit. And that's what they should do. I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Councillor Brenner?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm in 100% support, and I think that the motion is very clear. Currently, it really does make no sense to have to use the resource that we've been using, especially in Pickering, to declare community safety zones in different, on different local roadways. I say that because it ties up our staff time to have to do these designations. By providing... By providing the changes to the, to the, uh, to the Highway Traffic Act. It enables us not to have to do the designation, but in fact, be able to follow the trends. And to ensure that we have the proper enforcement to increase the safety on our streets. Community road safety is a number one concern that I hear on a regular basis. Not just my ward, but across the entire city of Pickering. And I certainly will be supporting this.
Mayor Pardon.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Chairman. And I try not to do this and speak against the, the majority of the group, but what I'm going to say here is that. We haven't, I don't think we've adequately covered our local roads yet where we have safety concerns. When I think of Oxbridge, we've got Toronto Street, we've got Brock Street, schools all in those zones. And we don't have, we don't have, um. Photo radar cameras there yet. Before we move outside of those zones, I think we should. Adequately cover from a regional perspective, those are all regional roads in Oxbridge. I think we need to do more on the areas that are already community safety zones. And we should add community safety zones in some of our hamlets. Like they did in Claremont, but in Leekstale and Zephyr. So. I won't be supporting this just because I think we need to finish this job before we move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, to close, Counselor Chapman.
Uh, thank you. Just one, yeah, what Mayor Collier said, I've, I've also been in touch with Minister of Transportation on probably three or four occasions this year at, uh, different road. Things that's happened. But I think, uh, council sending this in puts that extra little push on it as opposed to just talking to him and his staff. Face to face. And this is why we brought the motion forward. And not, not to contradict our commissioner, but the definition of a highway is vehicular and pedestrian travel, including entire area right of way. Includes King's highways, regional county roads, rural roads, municipal roads and streets. That's right out of the Highway Traffic Act. And that's what I was taught in police college. Thank you.
Thank you for the education, uh, Counselor Chapman. Um, Mr. Clerk, there was a recorded vote called by Counselor Nicholson, so I'll call that vote now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on the motion is starting now. I'm looking for Counselor Shahid. Thank you.
Uh, that carries. Uh, members of council, we'll move on to our third eight point three motion of the day. It's regarding opportunities for free level three EV charging stations and revenue opportunities for Durham region. It's on page seventy-six. It's moved by Counselor Leahy and Counselor Yamada. Counselor Leahy, nod. Counselor Yamada. Okay, Counselor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair Henry. So I won't read it. It's self-explanatory. I just. Had the opportunity to, uh, meet with a company called Jolt Charge and they're. Basically providing the high-level summaries, they're providing free level three chargers. To municipalities across the country. They're partnering with Telus. Their plan is to install five thousand of them across the country. They're already being and been installed or being installed in Vancouver, Calgary, Toronto, TTC lots, um, Markham, York. There's, uh, a whole wide variety of cities that are taking advantage of it. The main benefit for their, the region, if we have the opportunity to take advantage of this, is that you are. Basically, there's zero capital cost for this infrastructure and you're also paid per unit. Each municipality is paid ten thousand dollars per year, per unit. Plus the share of the advertising revenue. This whole model is, uh, is an advertising revenue. Play. So you've got about a six-foot, uh, unit with, uh, screens on each side. And the other benefit to residents to take advantage of this different piece is that. Every user that comes up, the first seven kilowatt hours are free. So if someone just wants a forty-five minute charge at a level three charger, it costs them nothing. So to me, there just seems to be only opportunities and upsides for us to provide free level three chargers to our residents. Our revenue stream to the region of Durham, which has held these tough, uh, financial times. And, uh, where it makes sense. So. I just also, these are the only ones that I know about. I'm hopeful that staff can find out if there's other vendors out there. This is just the only one that I. I spoke with and, uh, just make sure that we have this opportunity because they're, they're installing them all across Canada. Other municipalities are taking advantage of this, uh, revenue source and free charging opportunities for their residents. So to me. It makes a lot of sense for us to at least open up a dialogue and see what's possible. For us to take advantage of that and also asking this to be copied motion to all, uh, Durham area municipalities, because I think there's opportunity for all of us there. Level three chargers, like that's just, it's a lot faster. As we all know with the level piece, it's, it's free for residents for the first forty-five minutes, which is the first time I've heard of that. And there's a revenue gain. So to me, there's, uh, only upside to at least initiate those discussions and perhaps by. Uh, speaking with staff, maybe by the end, by June, we have an opportunity to understand if this fits in with the region or not. Uh, yes or no? Because I understand, I know, uh. Most of the region's focus has been on, you know, electrifying our fleet and putting all those resources into our own fleet. And this kind of deviates a little bit from that because this is actually for residents. But I'm still hopeful that there might be some opportunity for these, uh, revenue generation and free charging for residents across the region. And that's. Why the motion is before our council today and I hope for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Yamada.
Thank you, Regional Chair. Uh, happy to support, uh, and second this motion. Again, anything that allows us to. Think outside the box, provide a service to our residents and find, uh, a revenue stream. A- again, you know, you. I think we're looking for. Every possible penny that we can find, especially when we get closer to budget season. Uh, that this looks like, um, an opportunity. And, uh, I, I would hope that staff could take a look into it and come back with a report and, uh, share those findings. With council to see if this is worth going forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh. I, I can't support this motion at this time, uh, for, for two reasons. Uh, the first one that jumps out of mine is like, I can just see the rea-
Counselor Nicholson, we lost you.
Sorry, you got me now?
We got you now.
Yeah, don't know what happened there. But, uh, my concern is that. Are we going to see a, a, a parallel request? Uh, for those people who want to, who still buy fossil fuels? Are we going to be in the process of, uh, subsidizing their operations as well or is it just for electrical users? Uh, but the more important concern I have. Is I would like to see what impact, uh, this might have on our own electrical utilities. Uh, virtually every municipality in Durham at the local level is a shareholder. Holder in an electrical utility who's providing electrical services in our community. And, and we get, uh, I know in Oshawa, and I'm sure it's the same in the other communities. Uh, we get a dividend from the, uh, the, the profits that are reserved from our utilities and. Much of that money that we get from utilities and reinvested as well into infrastructure all across Durham region. Um, is this going to eat into that revenue stream? Are we in a sense, uh, partnering with a private sector company? Who's not doing this out of the goodness of their heart? Uh, they're obviously, they'll give you their first seven hours and after that they're going to charge you. Uh, so my question is, are we competing with ourselves? Are we in a situation where, uh, we're meeting, uh, what appears to be a positive step? But in fact, we're eating into potential revenue streams and potential incomes, uh, from our local utilities. Uh, given that our taxpayers are the shareholders of those utilities. And they profit from the mon, the monies that are generated by these utilities. I think we need to know more. Uh, about this plan and its impact before we start going down the path of investigating it. Uh, it would strike me that the, the more appropriate reaction to this motion, because I, I think it's well-intentioned. Um, is to simply refer to our staff. And have our staff coordinate with the local utilities in Durham. To get their comments before we take the step of endorsing this course of action. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Collier.
Thank you, Chair. And I, I thank Counselor Leahy for clarifying because when I first originally read this, I have three EV vehicles in my family and. I'm very well aware of the, the charging situation in Durham and, and other areas and. As far as level three charging stations in Durham or within most of Ontario, I think all of Ontario, there was not a single free level three charging station. Uh, I recently in June went to Nova Scotia. There's one in the entire province in Halpas. And not free, but there's only one level three charger in the entire province. So. But there are, there are several level threes. Tesla has a very extensive network throughout. So if you have a Tesla, great. If you don't have a Tesla. You're out of luck right now as far as using those. But. I think many of us are old enough to remember the beta versus VHS. Times and, and VHS one, while Tesla is VHS. So, so the way the, um, charging system is going now is, you know, there was two standards, Tesla and everything else. And now from my understanding, everything's going to be going and Tesla's going to be opening up their supercharging networks. To other vehicles of which I have two that I can't currently use, but will be able to use at the Tesla station. So. I think they are well-served by that. I'm not understanding the business model and that's not my job to do of how they can provide a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar asset for free. Um, I think any vehicle, I don't know that one exists that won't be charged in about twenty minutes at a level three. So forty-five is, is a good deal. Happy to support this, but I just, I, I think. If we were looking at our. And, and is it the intent, I guess my question to the mover and second or to have these at. Regional facilities? Is that the intent of this? Or are you just looking to do these? Wherever they can find a spot across the region?
To the mover? Counselor, Counselor Leahy?
Yeah. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Well, the, the intention is, this whole point of this thing is to have a discussion with staff and show that we're support of exploring opportunities. It's really what makes sense. Ideally, it's at regional-owned properties because then we're the ones receiving the money. It can be at private-owned properties, but then they're the ones receiving the money. So it's trying to take advantage of that. They're already installing hundreds of these stations as we speak across the country. So to me, it's let's take advantage of this opportunity. I also question the business model that it must be some really high advertising rates. But, um, regardless, the, they're, they're in the motion, they're doing it, they're providing it free and it's a revenue stream. So let's at least. Uh, get staff to explore that discussion. And I'm hoping the local area municipalities will do the same. I'm hoping to do the same at Whitby.
Okay. Well, this is asking for a report. I'm always for getting more information. We've done similar things with Durham Regional Transit. With Patterson and our, our bus shelter advertising and we and Ajax have done a similar arrangement with creative outdoor advertising with the. Garbage receptacles at transit stations in other areas where they provide the service, they remove the litter. They get, we get a small portion of the advertising dollars. So I'm happy to look at it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Shahid.
Thank you, Chair Henry. I just have a couple of questions and I. I don't know if I should have a conflict. I do have an EV. In fact, all my cars are now EV. So. Um, I, in, in essence, I support it, but I have several questions on the fact that. Is it federally funded by carbon tax funding? That's one. Um, and how sustainable it is in terms of long-term carbon tax funding? That's one because I, we, we, we have those in our municipalities and then. Carbon tax funding goes away, what happens? So that's one question. And then the other question on this is the fact that, um. Nothing is free. So how, how do we compensate, right? Nothing in this world is free. So. I mean, that's, that's what it is. In essence, it's a great motion. My third question through you, uh, is, uh, Chair Henry, we don't have any Tesla chargers, the superchargers in Durham region. So, I mean, I would like those superchargers because, you know, and within an hour you're charged and you're go, you, you get to go. I've traveled to Montreal, Ottawa and to the US in my EV. So I, I enjoy it. Would love, uh. A supercharger in Whitby or in Durham in the essence. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that exhausts the speakers. Uh, Ms. Well, just give me one second. Uh, Mr. Hunt. Quick question. The revenue source according to the motion is through advertising. And I'm not sure, um, that, uh. How do you measure the content of what's being advertised? So that it's appropriate for the community, not only for. For all, for children's and adults as well? Would, would that be part of the research that you would do in?
It is a very good question. Um, one which we have, I, I think, a- addressed, um, uh, I think pretty well. Uh, in our transit advertising. So we would probably apply the same model, but that would be certainly part of what we would look at.
And with the negotiations with the. The company that does this, the region would hold the position or the municipalities that if the content is, is considered offensive, that that content would be removed? Is that possible?
Yeah. So based on our experience with how the public reacts to advertising on regional assets. We, that would be something that we would want to have because we will get the complaints and the calls about. What the region might deem inappropriate advertising. We are required to balance that against the charter rights of advertisers on public space, uh, to express themselves. But, uh. You know, we've struck that balance before in, in our other advertising policies, but that might be one of the challenges with, uh, with an arrangement like this.
So it's not in the motion, but you will accept that as a direction? Thank you. Counselor Leahy to close.
Uh, thank you, Chair Henry. So, and I guess there's just so much going on with this and I appreciate the questions, but those are already addressed. Basically. Municipalities will get ten percent of the advertising space on there. They have full veto power of all advertising that goes through and approval. So there's no issue. To meeting any of those guidelines and we get an extra opportunity for advertising. Uh, basically regional and municipal programs on there. So no issue with vetoing anything that doesn't meet any of our guidelines. And we also, the municipalities also get advertising space to promote the, their programs as well. It's also, again, the model is an advertising model from how it's been described. So. Basically there, that is the model. Uh, so as long as there's advertising revenue, they're going to have the model. So you don't need to worry about any other, uh, revenue sources. So. Again, this is just to explore opportunities. I think we're seeing dozens of other municipalities take advantage of it. I think it behooves us to take advantage of it as well, especially since there's a revenue. Opportunity and free possible charging for residents. So to me, there's an awful lot of upside. And that, uh, we should get staff to explore that piece as well as the local area municipalities so they get access to all those benefits. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Foster, um, Counselor Leahy did close, but you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just one, I, and, and the motion is clear that we are looking at a variety of companies. But there have been an awful lot of references to this specific program. I, you know, and I, I, I just want to make sure that. You know, that by virtue of the reference to this program, the reference to the company, the reference to the, uh. Uh, the company building across, uh, the nation that, you know, that we are in fact going to be. Uh, looking broadly, not just for one. It's, uh, a good motion. We'll support it. Uh, I know the utilities, I know for a fact the utilities have looked at in some cases, participated in models, um, or tried to similar to this. Uh, and, uh, for the latitude, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that exhausts the speakers list. There was no recorded vote called, was there? Okay. So then in that case, I'll call the vote now. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Uh, members of council, nine point one is a confidential matter relating to negotiations with Metro Links. Uh, the report you will find in your agenda. Sorry. I don't have the exact page number. Uh, page. It's actually report twenty twenty-four dash cow dash forty-seven. Is there a need to go into closed session on this report? Okay. Okay. So Mayor Foster, do you need to go into closed session?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've got, I've got a simple question that can be asked in open.
Okay.
Uh, session on this.
So I've got a mover in Counselor Mayor Pietri. And a seconder in Counselor Leahy. So the item's on the floor. Uh, Counselor Mayor Pietri, do you wish to speak to it? Okay, not. So I'm just going to take you out. Um, off my list, not take you out. Sorry, I apologize. To the seconder wishing nothing to say. Okay. Mayor Foster, questions in open session.
Um, yeah, thank you. I, uh, through you, I'm guessing to, uh, Mr. Hunt. Uh, in the, um, in the detailed. Uh, I'm going to call it contract. Uh, there's an option A and B. Which will speak to upper, uh, versus lower. I think we all know. Uh, you know, what we'd have to do. Is there anything that the lower tiers should be, um, doing or considering? And if the answer is yes, uh, then I know you'll be in touch with the lower tiers.
So that's pretty simple. Yes or no, Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So yes and yes. Yes, they'll be in touch. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, members of council, on the item, I see no other speakers. I'm going to ask, uh, call the vote now. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Mr. Clerk, that is the business today. Mr. Clerk, that is the business of the day, separate from adjournment, so, correct? Okay. I need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Chapman, seconded by Counselor Pickles. On the motion to adjourn, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Thank you very much to members of council and staff, and enjoy the rest of your day.